Good evening, everyone. I am Councilmember Chris Ray and I'm calling to order the April 26 Issaquah City Council Study Session. We have three items on the agenda today. We have ID 0978, which is the 2023 to 2032 Solid Waste Collection Contract, ID 1037, Human Services Grants, and ID 1059, First Quarter Reports. This meeting will be held, conducted in person and virtually, in compliance with the Governor's Proclamation related to COVID-19 emergencies and open public meetings. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you may make comments after the presentation and council questions and answer period on tonight's agenda items. Additionally, Council President Walsh will be sharing a summary of any comments that we have received via email regarding tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address the council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who have signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your hand. If you are on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I will wait for a moment to see if anybody raises their hand. And Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak this evening? Or signed up or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes, Councilmember Ray, we have several people that have signed up. First on the list is Wendy Wyker. Can you please come to the podium?
Hold on just a second, let me finish my preamble. And then Wendy will be right with you, I promise. I missed a chunk here. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously, in fact, them into our decision-making. Please direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone for the virtual attendance or step up to the lectern. If you're in person, state your name, address, relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost, the meeting will need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin if you are able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. So with that, I will invite Wendy to come up and hit the button there and it'll turn the microphone red and then you're live. Thank you.
Am I live? Does that work? Great, okay. First of all, I thought I had three minutes, so I should really slow down. For the record, my name is Wendy Wyker. I live on Mercer Island, 4808 East Mercer Way. I work in Bellevue. And I'm pleased to be here tonight and thank you for your time and attention, councilmembers, staff, and Mary Lou, wherever you might be. My name is Wendy Wyker. I've been at Republic Services doing community relations for almost three years. I've lived in the Puget Sound region for about 30. I did send you an email this afternoon regarding our unique, compelling opportunity to bring an EV fleet to Issaquah in a few short years, while also doing the daily dirty work of keeping your streets clean and safe. All of that is in addition to working with your staff, regional policymakers, environmental groups, residents and businesses on all of our shared goals of getting to zero waste. We do this with robust educational outreach, infrastructure development, and bold public policy. My family and I have been coming to Issaquah for years. We've hiked your mountains. We've played on your soccer fields. We've shopped on Front Street. And of course, we've visited the salmon hatchery more times than I can count. I love Issaquah, and I love my company. So I can't resist the chance to come before you tonight to bring both of those together on this real climate action opportunity that we've all been talking about for years. I'm talking about fleet electrification. First, let me give sincere credit and thanks to your staff. You received three good proposals from three solid companies in the region. They conducted a fair process and a thorough process. My team came in second, and Gary assures me he'll allow me a chance to hear why. Later this spring, we have a chance to debrief. Regardless, I'm here now because I believe if his team had waited the evaluation towards the future and prioritized bold climate action regarding emissions reductions and transportation electrification, we would have been the recommended choice. Sustainability in action isn't just our tagline in the 42 states we operate with our 35,000 employees and almost 2,000 city partnerships throughout the country. Republic Services here in the Puget Sound region has almost 1,000 employees in over 25 cities practicing sustainability in action. My colleagues established zero-waste, circular economy, and renewable energy goals years ago. We do this work every day and are so excited about the progress we're making, especially on the fleet electrification front. We have five EV trucks rolling in Boise with five more coming by the end of the year for a total of 10 trucks serving all lines of business in that city. My Boise team has charging infrastructure already installed for twice that. At Republic Services, we're investing in climate action, and I can't wait to do it here in the Puget Sound. So why not start now? Why not start with you? Let's be bold on climate action and fleet electrification. I encourage you, no, I challenge you actually, to be bold on this unique opportunity. We can show the region and the state what's possible when the private and public sectors work together to implement bold policy objectives. And more importantly, we can do it for our kids and our grandkids in saving this planet for generations to come. Thank you for your time and attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Wendy. Clerk, is there someone else who's signed up to speak?
Yes, Councilmember Ray, Rich Reinhardt is present and would like to speak to council.
Evening, council. Good evening, staff. My name is Rich Reinhardt. I've been in the environmental service industry for almost 15 years. I am the General Manager for Republic Services Eastside Operations, located at 1600 127th Avenue Northeast in Bellevue, Washington. Well, handle here isn't just a tagline, it's what we do. My team has the knowledge and experience to deliver essential services every day, ensure a smooth transition of service providers, and most importantly, work with you on this bold, innovative opportunity to bring the first EV solid waste industrial fleet to the state of Washington. Every day, I get the privilege to lead the critically daily dirty work we do and deliver on the urgent, sustainable promises Republic Services made locally, nationally, and globally. Each and every member of my team and I take these commitments seriously. We have the national support for our local operations, 26 local virtual call center representatives, the latest technology in your trucks, and operations to ensure efficiency and excellent customer service, and a recycling center in Seattle that processes 45 tons recycling an hour. Which brings me to the exciting partnership we're working to bring electric vehicle fleets to our community. We already have 100% renewable natural gas fleet in King County, so transitioning to electric will just take some planning and some infrastructure development. We have the time, partnership, track record, and expertise to get it done. Transitioning to a new service provider may seem daunting to you, not to us. We've done it before, and we have a solid track record to smooth transition and satisfy customers. We know from your residents' survey that they want clear, impactful, and meaningful progress on climate action. They said they want to keep weekly recycling regardless of the cost savings. They also said they want electric vehicles and reducing emissions was important to them. Our customers and yours are demanding and expect us to transition to a low-carbon, reduced emissions economy. Let's answer the call and deliver on that rallying cry. We know the future is electric, and I know firsthand Republic Services can deliver it. We're rolling EVs in Boise, and it's just a matter of time before we have them here in the Puget Sound. Why not start now? Why not start in Issaquah? Thank you.
Great, thanks, Rich. City Clerk?
Councilmember Jim Hutchinson is in the audience and would like to address the council.
Good evening, council and staff. Rounding out the Republic triad, I guess, here. As mentioned by my predecessor colleagues, I work with Republic Services. My name is Jim Hutchinson. I'm the Director of Municipal Services throughout our northwest area. And although our address is 1600 127th Avenue Northeast in Bellevue, Washington, home address is just down the street at 24602 Southeast 278th Street in Maple Valley. So enjoy your community. Enjoy a lot of aspects. Have been a Kiwanis in the past, been part of the Chamber in the past, and have had a life, literally my lifetime experience is here in Issaquah as well as Maple Valley and throughout the Northwest. So a native, few and far between, I know we are, but am a native of the area. And thank you for the opportunity this evening to advocate for the city to do something bold and courageous. You've heard a couple of my colleagues talk about electric vehicles. I want to talk about sustainability in a little bit broader context. And this is not, I am not here today to talk about and cast dispersions at the staff council's process. Please understand, my purpose here today is to more talk about what may have been overshadowed as a result of the process in the tumultuous economic and socially turbulent time that we're currently dealing with. But it is important that I attempt to, you know, keep to my commitment and try to keep brief my comments. So I'm going to focus in on three areas that I really would like the council to take into consideration as you debate this solid waste contract this evening. First is, and all three of these things differentiate Republic Services as, from a sustainability perspective. The first is our, actually not only expressed, but actually our written commitment not only to us as a company, but to the country as a whole. As we, we're the only environmentally services company that has signed on to the strategic-based initiative which sets specific goals for us to attain by 2030. Specifically, we have said we will reduce absolute greenhouse gas emissions in the Scope 1 and 2 category by 35% by 2030. We have said that we will increase and recover for the circular economy by 40%, which means we're driving diversion. And we've also committed ourselves to look for beneficial reuse and biogas additions by upwards of 40% by 2030. Those are things we've signed on the dotted line as a goal for our company, and we're committed to those. And we've stepped up with a number of companies throughout the country to say this is a priority for us. The second item I would address is that we've also dedicated ourselves to plastic circularity. Plastic is a big issue for us. Republic just recently announced that we are opening the country's first and only polymer centers. And what polymer centers do is they take the plastic recyclings that we would collect from you, we're taking it to our facilities, we're breaking it down even further so that plastic bottles actually turn into plastic bottles and aren't downcycled into some other product. Now, those are things that just came about and we're talking about. But the third is, and my colleagues alluded to this, is the electrification of our fleet. Republic Services is not proposing pilots. We're not proposing using service vehicles. We're proposing electric garbage trucks. We have five of them in the next month that will be, three of them that are delivered, one will be delivered in the next week. The fifth that Wendy mentioned will be delivered before June. And five more by the end of the year. That's in Boise, Idaho. We're very proud of that. But we're only starting there. That's where we would like to move forward with. And we know that the city has stepped up and said that this is an important endeavor for them. When we put our proposal together, we specifically looked at how do we provide services of this nature? We made sure that we were lean and mean on the services we provided, and we ended up with a proposal that would save the city $1 million a year. Emphasize, $1 million a year. That $1 million will go a long way, if not all the way, to making sure that Issaquah becomes the first city in the Northwest, other than Boise, so in Washington and Oregon, to actually be able to tout that they have electric vehicles. Not support vehicles, which you're just running trucks on, garbage truck vehicles. Republic is committed to bringing thousands of these vehicles to our infrastructure in the next 10 years, and we want Issaquah to be one of those. So I encourage you, as you debate, please keep in mind, we are, in this instance, the low-cost opportunity that the council has. That low cost doesn't mean we're skimping on the environment. In fact, we believe it gives you the opportunity to do great things, and we would encourage the opportunity to talk about a partnership on how to make that happen. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Jim. City Clerk, has anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, Councilmember Ray, Cassandra Sage is present virtually and would like to address council. Ms. Sage, I'm attempting to make you a panelist. Are you on the phone?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You won't have an option to turn on your video, but we can see and hear you. Or we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Cassandra Sage, and although I'm a resident of Kirkland, I work for the Issaquah-based Influence the Choice, which you may know is the only nonprofit in East King County dedicated to the prevention of youth substance use and promotion of mental health. The 2021 Healthy Youth Survey results were just released, and thanks to the Issaquah School District for posting them on their website and being very transparent. It's a survey that tells you how kids are doing, how they're feeling, what they've been managing, and how we might help. But it's 120 questions per student or so. So the Issaquah Schools Foundation and Influence the Choice hired a data analyst to go through the results and make it a little bit more understandable for the adult community who really wants to know how kids are doing. And to that end, I would like to invite all of you to the Action Forum for Youth, which will be Tuesday, May 10, at 4:30 in the afternoon via Zoom. So there's a registration link, and I have added that to my public comment to the clerk in an email, but I'm happy to resend. If you would like to email me, I'm cassandra@influencethechoice.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cassandra. City Clerk, anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, Councilmember Ray, Anthony Brocato is present and would like to address council.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Anthony Brocato, General Manager of Recology, King County. Thank you for your time tonight. Recology's company's motto is "A World Without Waste", and we are thrilled with the opportunity to continue our solid waste contract with the city of Issaquah and serve as a partner to meet the city's inspiring climate action goals. Recology has extensive experience in working with Issaquah's apartment buildings, residents, and businesses to divert material out of the landfill, including increasing the number of multifamily compost subscribers by 500% over the course of our existing contract. This experience will be instrumental in meeting the city's goal of achieving 70% diversion by 2030. In addition, Recology is the only waste hauler who is currently running electric garbage trucks in King County, and we are bringing the region's first automated side-load electric truck for service and residential areas to the city of Issaquah, and we anticipate this happening within the next couple of months. Recology is the only 100% employee-owned company in the industry. We place a premium on community relationships and are proud of our demonstrated commitment to the city of Issaquah. Over the course of the service of the city, we have worked together to offer residents new, convenient ways to reduce landfill waste, including launching the first-in-nation recycling-focused retail store and customer service center in Gilman Village. Our focus on the community is also seen prominently with our involvement in Salmon Days. Recology provides sponsorships and kind, service donations, and our Streetscapes team provides clean services at the event and in the downtown area, conducting operations at night to minimize impact to its visitors. We are honored to have the proposal recognized by staff as the highest-scoring submission in the round of RFPs and look forward to any questions or comments council may have regarding what we've proposed. It has been a privilege to serve as the city of Issaquah's solid waste provider for this past decade. We at Recology love being a piece of this community and providing the highest-quality service and community engagement programs to the residents and businesses of Issaquah. We are a proud supporter of numerous, numerous community organizations, events such as Issaquah School Foundation, Mountain to Sound Greenway, Issaquah Kiwanis Club, Salmon Days, Concerts on the Green, and many others. We look forward to continuing these relationships for many years to come. If council sees fit, we at Recology would be honored to expand and continue our partnership with the city of Issaquah into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. City Clerk, anyone else desiring to speak this evening?
Councilmember Ray, no one else has signed up, and I see no virtual hands raised at the moment.
Okay, I'm going to just wait for a second and see if anybody raises their real hand or their virtual hand. All right, and just as a reminder, we do have public comment opportunities after each of the agenda items, so we will take comment at that time. So with that, let's move on to our first agenda item this evening, which is ID 0978, which is the 2023 to-
Councilmember Ray, can I summarize any comments?
Thank you, Council President. Before we do that, I'm going to ask Council President Walsh to summarize the emails that we've received on tonight's topics.
Thank you. So Wendy Wyker mentioned the email that we had received from Republic Services, but we also received from a resident talking about the solid waste collection contract, supporting kind of a competitive contract, really appreciating what we had heard in the survey, talking about wanting to have a wide array of recycling products and all of the goals in that survey. And then additionally, asking whether the council, what our support was for requiring recycling programs in multifamily housing units. And so generally, those were the comments that we received. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thanks for not letting me blow on past that. It's important. All right, first agenda item, ID 0978, 2023 to 2032 Solid Waste Collection Contract. Tonight is going to be presented by Gary Schimmick, our Utilities Engineering Environmental Programs Manager with assistance from consultant Jeff Brown. So Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, council member. Just give me a second here to share my screen. Confirming that that works. Excellent, yes, a little nervous here. Your Utilities and Engineering and Environmental Manager, first live performance in over two years. My first performance here in this delightful council venue. So thank you very much. As Councilmember Ray mentioned, Gary Schimmick and Jeff Brown to my left, Epicenter Consulting or Epicenter Services. Wanted to get it correct. Thank you. So I will be leading the presentation, but Jeff will be here, of course, for any questions. And we also have Jeff's colleague, Jeanette Jurgensen, from Been There Consulting on the line in case there's questions as well. Get this out of my way. There we go. So our purpose. We are here to provide an update on the contract process and, more importantly, receive your direction to move forward. We are looking for a direction on two particular issues. First, the contract process itself, and again, the administration fee. In terms of the contract process, we are asking your guidance to select one of three pathways forward. The first being concurring with the staff-recommended revised contract as presented. Second, to direct staff, myself and others, to add, delete contract alternatives, or negotiate contract changes with ecology, and then come back. Or number three, direct staff to begin discussions with Republic, which you heard from today, and/or Waste Management. But Republic would be the second in the scoring process. In terms of the administration fee, there's really three independent but related items. And they all work together, but these can be discussed and voted on independently. The first is setting that administration fee at 6%, which is a reduction from the existing 9%. Second is utilizing the sustainability fund balance to cover the entire administration fee for the first year of the contract to somewhat reduce the impacts that you've read about. And the third is really just addition to that, but it's using the sustainability fund balance to cover half of that administration fee for the second year of the contract, again, for that reduction. Okay, let me now provide a very brief summary of the existing contract and our new contract process. Over a decade ago now, if you remember back to the Great Recession, it was on the heels of that, 2011. The city conducted a solid waste process similar to what we're doing today, again, in 2011. CleanScapes, now Recology, was awarded that contract, which, you know, looking back, had relatively very low rates for the region at that time. It was a seven-year contract, and we had two extensions. So the contract will expire on June 30, 2023. So let me now jump to the new contract process, which we talked quite a bit about at our October 4 meeting, but just wanted to provide a little recap to that as well. So our quest for proposal process. So RFP was developed based upon that 2011 existing contract and the amendments as our template. We did edit that based on what's called the industry review. We received excellent comments from all three haulers that eventually proposed in addition to others. And then, of course, we had administration and staff comments as well. But those were all incorporated and put out on the street in fourth quarter 2021. And, you know, actually, as my colleagues from Public mentioned today, we received three strong proposals, so I'm very pleased with that. I have to be honest with you and tell you, when Jeff and I started, some folks told me I'd get one, maybe two. And I disagreed, and thankfully, I proved some of my friends wrong. So I think we're blessed to actually have that and have a robust process here in Issaquah. Now, all those three bids were examined immediately by Jeff, myself, and Jeff's colleague for conforming, and our law legal team, Rachel Turbin, to ensure that they conform to the bid requirements, and they all did. The proposals were evaluated for both qualitative and quantitative measures, which is, you know, basic business practice. And your evaluation team consisted of a cross-department team of, and I think most of these folks are on the line today, Bennett Ashbaugh, Public Works Street Department, Jen Davis Hayes, Economic Development, Suzy Moncel from our Finance Department, and Evan Brumfield and myself from your Public Works Department. So the scoring. As I just mentioned, the proposal scoring included both quantitative and qualitative elements, and again, best business practice with that. The qualitative, quantitative score, I'm sorry, was conducted by my colleague here, Jeff Brown with Epicenter, and his colleague Jeanette Jurgensen from Been There Consulting. The scoring was simply the proposal price. Again, after confirming that we were comparing apples to apples across the three proposals. The lowest scorer received 60 points. And the other two competitors then received prorated values based on the differences in their pricing. So that's a fairly straightforward process that we used for that, and I think Jeff has used that before. Excuse me. The qualitative element consisted of four categories, with the highest score for any category being 10 points. The categories that we used were actually similar to 2011 with some minor tweaks. And they included, as you see on the screen, customer service, responsive to issues, call center approach for category one, contract compliance, implementation, transition plan for category two, diversion approach, system design and operations for category three, and then finally, sustainability, innovation, equity, community outreach and education for category four. Again, each for 10 points for a total maximum score of 40. Now, the score for each category was based upon the submitted written proposal, or digital proposal for that matter. One-hour interview, which was virtual, with all of the evaluation team, of course. Facility tour and discussions at that tour. with all of the evaluation team, of course, facility tour and discussions at that tour, and then reference checks. As you can see on the screen, the qualitative scores ranged from 31.2 to 15.2. And adding both of those elements together, Recology received the highest overall score at 83.3. So a little bit about the qualitative highlights. I think the, the quantitative is pretty, again, pretty clear cut. And at the, I should say, at the completion of the scoring process, I facilitated a discussion with your evaluation team to, to focus in on the key elements for all of us that, that, you know, made Recology's qualitative element shine a little bit brighter than everybody else. And there are six that I have on here and discuss a little bit. I'll dig into a few of them after I go through the list. First is the ability to partner with the city on Issaquah's climate action plan. Their local call center with robust staffing levels, commitment to equity and diversity in internal staffing, diversion of materials from landfill and reduction of contamination as core principles of business, unavoidable customer impacts associated with the transition from one contractor to another, and innovative education and outreach implementation and strategies. So just a couple to highlight that really, you know, as, again, back to that conversation that I had with the evaluation team that, that stuck out on us from, you know, the, the six did. But start with their, their facility in Seattle that we toured. And I, I was, was there before, but again, it struck me this time that is a really testament to their business model. And it's, it's a, again, it's a facility that does, we talked about today, all the dirty work. But it has such an ambiance for education and outreach and understanding the sustainability process and what can be done with our materials that we sometimes just toss away blindly. They have artists in residence, which we got to meet and looked at some of the work that, again, was done with the reused and recycled material. So that really stuck out with me, that, again, a facility that is used for day-to-day work can also be such a, a place for actually learning and education and treating everybody, giving everybody a solid understanding of things that can be done with our, with our waste. The other thing I wanted to point out is the local call center with the staffing levels. And, and the robust is there for a reason. As, as you may have guessed, 2020 and 2021 were difficult years for all businesses, including probably all of our haulers. And Recology, you know, had our, our issues as well during, in our city, when we had a lot of conversations. But what I was really impressed about and, and what we heard about during the interviews and during the proposal is the, the local call center and the ability to staff up when needed. And, and they did such in, in 2021 amazingly, and really stepped up. And that came through on their interviews and during the facility review as well. And finally, I think I'd like to mention on the last, on the right here, the innovation, education, outreach. Going back to the tour, one, one thing, of course, I knew about this, but they really hammered home the point of how important for multifamily it is to build that relationship with the, the manager of the facilities. That, that research has shown that. I've had a little bit of that experience at Redmond, but they really talked us through that. And that's something that not only would we do on the existing contract, but of course, that's going to be incorporated into their, into the new contract as well. So those are some of the highlights that, again, again, just going back to what I said originally, that, that made Recology, again, what I'd say, shine a little better than everybody else, because you did, we did receive three quality proposals for this process. Next piece here is our adjustment to the base contract. And again, as a member of how this worked, we sent out the request for proposal with a base contract, and then there were contract alternatives. The scoring, the quantitative scoring that Jeff conducted was based on the base contract. It excluded the alternatives. So all the numbers that we'll get to in a few slides that you'll see where are the base contract. So after the scoring was completed, we had our discussions in anticipation of this meeting to work out a final draft contract. And where we ended up was adding three alternatives to the base contract at no additional cost. And those are the top three here. The continuation of the Gilman Village Store, the continuation of assumption of all commodity risk for marketing, recycling markets, and then expanding the range of recycling from the base contract to match what we have now. And you can see the prices up there. Excuse me. Other things we've, we have, you'll see and have read about in the, the draft contract that was included in the packet. Is, and, and I think Anthony mentioned this a bit today, but Recology will use electric support vehicles and explore rod vehicles during the contract. And again, on one of the, on our end, as part of the conversations, we agreed to expand collection hours for certain commercial areas away from households based on a drive, drive-through that I did with the operation staff, again, in preparation for this meeting. And those will, that will start at 6:00. Give them ability to start at 6:00 rather than 7:00 in these designated areas. What you see on the screen now are the other contract alternatives I mentioned that were not included into the contract. So these will stay on the side. And basically, the first two were every other week, service alternatives for recycling and compostables. The third item, we decided to keep unlimited recycling instead of going with alternative of saving and going, keeping the status quo of limiting, having a threshold of recycling for commercial businesses. And then the last two were alternatives, were different indexes for fee escalation. And again, all of these were, were written and included in the, in the request for proposal, but we did not include them in the contract. The community survey was mentioned earlier today during the questions. And also wanted to say that these results really did have influence on what alternatives we added to the base contract, right? The three, again, that, that I just mentioned. So very proud to say, with the help of our amazing city communication staff, we had over 900 respondents to this. Blew my mind. I, I, I knew people were interested in this topic, but I was expecting 250. And I was, I would have walked away happy, so. And we got them right away, like in a week, we had 750. So very, very impressive. So, so shout out to our city communications staff. So what do we hear? Very important was keep weekly service. Important was more education and outreach, again, to meet our climate action goals. And then electric vehicles was of, of interest to, to make sure that does get to Issaquah at, in the next contract, is the way that it was phrased. Somewhat important was the storefront, and then hard-to-recycle items available via curbside. And then finally, the not important were new carts at additional costs. It's a problem with Garmin when your heart rate goes up. Even though I feel cool, I guess I'm not. Rate impacts. So as you all saw in the report, the rates are significantly higher. And the new contract rates are, but are also still comparable to the current market. So let's just go over some of the core reasons, just to be, you know, transparent. Right, the first is the current below-market rates as a result of abnormally competitive market during 2011. Right, back in that heel, so it was a very, we've got a very good deal in 2011. And, you know, that's, you know, kind of, just have to call it what it was. And thankfully, we've got that, and you'll see that in some of the graphs. Second reason, annual inflation escalation is not keeping up with costs. Third is inability, instability in the recycling markets and decrease in value of those materials. Inflation uncertainty is number four, and then again, supply chain issues. Okay, the garbage rate examples. There are multiple comparisons on this table, so let's take them one at a time. But for now, let's focus on the first line, which is the single-family cart. So 2002 versus 2002. So what we have here is the Issaquah existing contract, again, right now, compared to the existing Eastside disposal state regulator rates. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is unincorporated King County for the most part. So 2002, so right now, this year, this is quite a, quite a bit of difference between customers here in our fine city of Issaquah and those in unincorporated King County. The second comparison is the 2002 Issaquah rates with Ecology compared to the proposed, that would start effective July 1st, 2023. So we see we'd be going from $17.44 to $32.13, and then just taking a look, keeping going down, dumpsters, 400 to 585, and the drop box, 182 to 315. So about, you know, on average, Jeff, I believe that was about 55% about, about all, about all the services. So then the third comparison here-
Gary, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, please.
On the table here, the existing Eastside disposal state regulated rates, what does that include?
Jeff, can I turn that to you, please?
Yes, I normally don't include UTC areas as a comparison, because often the service package is very different. But in this particular case, there's an A and B service area for Eastside disposal, and there is actually weekly, weekly recycling collection. So I could take their base rate, add in their, their weekly recycling collection, and add in their yardway service, and get this weekly yardway service, and get the same service package that you have in Issaquah, where all those things are bundled into one thing. So that is apples to apples.
Yeah. Let me try my questioning, it's the other way around. What, what, what geography does this cover? Not what services does this cover?
Oh.
I'm just wondering, it's like, is it Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Sammish?
It's not the cities, it's the area outside the cities. Yeah, the more, the, the area, I think service area B, now I'm speaking out of term here. It's the area that's closest to the urban areas and their other area.
It's also cities like Ken.
Kenmore, too, yeah, right.
Do, do we have comparable numbers to other municipalities? And, because that's what I thought this was. And so now, that's what I was trying to get is confirmation of that. So, I mean, do we have Sammish, Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, are comparable city numbers?
When we looked at what cities to select for comparisons, we tried to pick ones that had had very recent procurements. And so that's why the cities that are in the rate comparison are there. One of the problems we have is if we do comparisons, and that particular city, like Bellevue, for example, or one of these other cities, happens to be on the old contract cycle, where everybody was getting these fantastic rates, it makes us look really bad as, as the city. So we want to compare recent procurements, competitive procurements, and that's what we did.
Okay, great, thanks.
And I just jumped ahead, council member, to just a slide where we'll get to it, but I just want to show you now, since we're on the topic, there was Auburn Federal Way and Mercer Island were the comparisons that we'll get to in a couple of slides, but just, you know, we're, we're going to get to that.
Well, I'm just going to sit here and wait, then.
Okay, let me get back there. Okay, so thank you for that question. And then the third comparison on the slide is the, all, all the proposals, all the bids. So if you look at the, the, the last three on the right, we have the Recology, Republic, and Waste Management, comparison of those, so again, going down. And again, this is what was submitted for the base contract. So for the 32 gallon, 32 to 39, 52. For the four-yard dumpster, 585, 389, 524. And for the drop box, 315, 398, 297. So I know there is a lot on there, but just to recap, we had a 2022 versus 2022 for unincorporated and city, 2022 and the proposed for Recology, and then the three, the three bits. Overall garbage rates. So what this, let's just focus on the, it's a little busy slide, maybe should have broken this up into two, but let's focus on the blue on the right. What we are comparing here is the existing annual revenue from our Recology contract, 2022, compared to what would be the revenue in the new contract that would be effective July 1st. So let's take them line by line, and this is where we get at the average 55% increase. But for single-family, we would, the revenue would be 2.3 million to 3.9, so that's a 68% increase for single-family. For multifamily commercial, going from 4.0 to about 5.8, again, 46%. And then drop box, which is the lowest of all three, 285 to 489, so about a 71%. And when I mentioned, when I asked Jeff about 55, this is what we were referring to. So the overall revenue stream would increase from 6.7 to 10.3, and that's overall 55%. Okay, another slide here, and there's two primary comparisons here. Again, 2002 to 2002, and then 2023 to 2022. Let me explain, unpack that a bit. So if we look at the Issaquah 2022 rates compared to the Auburn Federal Way and Mercer Island 22 rates, you see that, that right now, today, similar to what we talked about for unincorporated King County, our rates are much lower right now, given, you know, the 2011 contract. So then if we compare the Issaquah proposed 2023 rates, this gets to your question, councilmember Ray. As you can see, we will be, we would be with our new 2023 rates a little bit higher than the current Auburn 2022 rates. Again, a little bit higher than Federal Way and a little bit less than Mercer Island. So the average is about, you know, what we would be paying. So we are comparable to these, to these, the three here. And again, Jeff, we chose these because these three had recent procurements, if I'm correct. So we, we, we could come back and provide that information for other cities as well. But we would, to play with the data law, just to make sure we're, we're comparing apples to apples about the procurements. But that'd be, be, be fine to do that if you'd like, councilmember Ray. Okay, and one thing I just wanted to alert you about, that even if we, we wrap up these proceedings over the next few, few weeks or so, we'll be coming back. Because King County recently approved a restructuring of tipping fees. That's the, the tip at the, at the transfer station, effective January 1st, 2023. So what this will, what this means, it's a fixed fee per city in, and that's, again, it's all cities. So this is not just Issaquah, this is all cities. Plus a lower, lower tipping fee on actual tonnage to when you actually go into the facility. So Jeff and I's conversation that we've had, we expect the revenue, revenue to be neutral with this change, but it is a change, and it will require a contract amendment. Even if we, you know, except come back and you approve a contract next month, we will be coming back to you. But again, just not Issaquah, this will be, be all cities. And then the contract would, amendments would be brought to you to this, this fall. So this is more of just a heads up, I didn't want to surprise you in the future. Okay, our options. So for the contract practice, process, again, this is one of the three pathways here, where we're asking you to concur with the staff recommended revised contract as presented, with no additional changes to the proposed language, or direct staff to add or delete recommended RFP alternatives and negotiate other contract changes with Recology, or direct staff to begin discussions with Republic under Waste Management. And our, our recommendation to you on this would be to complete the development of the new 10-year contract with Recology for council approval at the May 16th, 2022 regular business meeting. Our second option for you, again, is the administration- Our second option for you, again, is the administration fee. The administration fee is, what we're recommending is to set it at 6%, which responded to an email earlier today. It's about 542,000 approximately, which is a reduction from 9% on the existing contract. Again, and what we're doing on that, just to be aware, is we're keeping the, staying with the revenue, which is about $540,000 per year, would increase with inflation, rather than sticking with the percentage, which would provide much greater revenue. We can believe we can perform our business here at the city with the 6%. And again, better value for lower rates for the customer on that. On the second bullet, again, we'd like to utilize a sustainability fund balance, which is about $1 million right now, to cover the entire administration fee for the first year of the contract. And again, that's about $540,000. And then your third bullet here is to utilize, again, that same fund balance. After taking out the 500,000, there'll still be, you know, about 500,000 left, plus or minus. And then we would use that to cover half of the administration fee. So after inflation and then taking half of it, it'd be about $340,000. So total, just approximately about $800, $900,000 over those two years that would be removed from the rate payer's responsibility. And our recommendation is to set the fee at 6% and to use the sustainability fund balance for both of those purposes. Thank you very much for listening to that rather long presentation. Now we'll open it up to questions for myself, Jeff, or anyone else we can call on the line.
Great, thanks, Gary. Well done, and glad to have you in person. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Two questions. First, did you, did I, did you have it, and I missed it, a rate schedule for the proposed, the combination of covering the administrative costs next year and half of the administrative costs the year after? You had the, you had what the old rate was, you have what the new base rate is. Do you have, was there something there that said, here's what it is in 2023, here's what it is in 2024, here's what it is in 2025?
I had the, what I showed here are the, I believe, the revenues right here. Is this what you?
No, no, rates.
Okay, now these, and these, right, these don't include, these do not include the administration fee on this.
Right. What I would love to see or understand is, you know, presumably the suggestion to use sustainability funds to cover the administrative costs, I'm assuming, is to sort of prevent rate shock to the end, to our community. But without seeing what those rates are, it's a little hard to understand why we should pull that lever.
Right, so I think the best way I could explain that is, in gross dollars, is the first year. It would be a reduction overall for all end users of $500,000. And that's equivalent to, Jeff, I believe, about 2% of the rates, if I'm correct, 2% of the revenue package?
So it'd be a 2% reduction in?
Right, so it's small. It's small, but that is something that, you know, we, you know, we would consider doing to at least reduce by that amount.
Okay, that does seem small. The second question that I have is, so I was actually on council the last time we did this, and one of the exciting things that they were gonna bring was these regenerative braking trucks. How's that worked out for us? How many of the, how much of the, they had the, they were gonna use compressed gas on the braking systems on the hills, so that they would, so the trucks would, basically, when you go to brake, they would basically store the energy in high-pressure gas and then release it as they start to accelerate again? How's that worked for us?
I'm gonna have to get back to you on that unless Jeff knows that, or we could bring somebody from ecology on that.
Yeah, they proposed hydraulic launch assist trucks, and now, I can be corrected if I'm wrong, if somebody from ecology is here, but they, they didn't pan out, and they.
What does that mean, it didn't pan out?
They didn't work as advertised, which was somewhat interesting, because I had called Port Angeles to get the background information on their experience with HLA trucks, and that was part of the evaluation. But I think I talked to somebody in ecology about five years later, and it was like, well, it didn't quite work the way we thought. But I'll just say that, that's the best of my recollection, but I could be wrong.
All right, thank you.
No further questions.
Okay, great. Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. So as Gary knows, I'm very interested in communication with multifamily residents living in a condominium myself, and we have other council members who live in multifamily situations. And I heard earlier about the importance of communications with apartment and complex managers, and I think that's great, but I also think that we are bombarded by messages. And I think it's really difficult to penetrate that communications field. And I know that in our situation in the condominium where I live, we could really benefit from just direct communication with residents and not going through, I mean, I wouldn't say don't go through the manager, but I think we need something in addition, and maybe some of my other council members can comment on this. When I look in the recycling bins, I'm sometimes appalled by what's in there. And yet, we have seen improvements when signage and those kinds of things are put out. And so I really do believe that if people have the right information and good information, that they will do the right thing when it comes to recycling. But that communication needs to be, I think, direct and consistent. And, you know, the population of multifamily tends to move more often. It needs to be done over and over again. So so that was a statement and not a question. I know I see Councilmember Ray looking at me. So could you take us through the conversations? Could you explain what's been happening with the discussions on multifamily communications? And perhaps the ecology representative here would also want to speak to that. Thank you.
Certainly. Yeah, let me see if I could give you my two cents here, but I would love to have them talk about it. Now, or they could speak afterwards in the comment period, that may work. But you bring up a good point, and I just want to remind folks of the administration fee that we talked about and how important that is, because your question relates to really contract and then beyond the contract, really. So as part of the contract, Recology or any hauler has duties, as you noticed in the contract, for education and outreach. And that partly is talking to the customers, but it can be other things as well. What we do is develop a work plan. And that's specified in the contract, and really, it is that, it's a negotiated contract or negotiated work plan. But we can focus on anything within reason that the city wants to focus on for that year. So it could be more direct communication, so that's definitely an avenue. Now, the second piece, again, of the administration fee covers work above and beyond the contract. For example, grants. We received grants from King County. Again, we have to manage that grant and then hire consultants to help us out. But then the more grants you receive and the more staff time we have through the administration fee, the more successful we can be. And that's what I experienced at, when I worked with Redmond. They had a very successful program, and that's what we're starting to kick up now. So Stacy, I mentioned this in my email this afternoon, Stacy Vin McKinstry, our sustainability manager, and I are teaming up on this right now. It's gonna be more taking off her plate onto mine, but using those grant funds to work with specialized consultants to get at the heart of the issue of, you know, events. Actually, Stacy has one going on relatively soon that I can provide more information on. Then actually working, again, with the residents, getting more information out. So the sky's the limit when it comes to those grants, right? There are certain things that you cannot do. It's not for garbage disposal, right? You need to use the the grants for recycling and diversion. And then the really good news is, from what we've seen, the grants are solid weights, the amount are gonna be going up. So with the use of this administration fee, again, it's, we're gonna get a lot done with our hauler, with the contract, but then there's that above and beyond to meet the climate action plans. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to do that. So I don't know if that suffices for now, and then I could ask our colleagues from ecology to come speak at the end.
Very appreciated.
Thank you. Certainly.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. I have a couple of questions. One is, I noticed that of the comparisons between companies for the multifamily and single-family, or the dumpster versus the single-family cart, that there were differences in which company was proposing cheaper. And in fact, this dumpster is less than the current, the existing Issaquah rate under Republic's proposal, if I'm correct. So one thing I wondered is, in terms of the overall cost savings for people in the city, did we look at what kind of, what the current breakdown of single-family versus multifamily is? And then also how we expect that to change over the course of the contract? Because I would expect that we're growing in multifamily housing.
Jeff, can I defer to you on that, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought somebody would notice that. So when we do the RFP, we ask haulers to, excuse me, provide rates on what we call a cost-of-service basis, which in theory means that that's exactly what it costs to provide that customer service, and there's no cross-subsidy between different service levels within a line of business and between lines of business. And so when we evaluate the proposals and do the rate score, we just take a product sum. We take, you know, the number of customers at a certain service level, multiply it, come up with an annual total. We don't police how they allocate their overhead costs. And so I often see, you know, the rate difference, you know, you'll have one hauler that'll be much lower on single-family residential, but they'll be the higher one in commercial, but they'll be the same in Dropbox. It's all over the place. And we don't try to police that. They have to live with whatever they put down on paper, because, for example, if a city moves so that proportionally there's more multifamily in the future than there is single-family, that's at the hauler's risk. They can't come back to the city and say, hey, you know, we assumed we were gonna subsidize our rates with commercial, and now you've got too many residential customers, and we're coming up short. We specifically designed the contract and the RFP to be cost-of-service. And so what you're seeing there, I think, is more of an artifact of how they allocate their own internal costs, because they all know the rules, and they all know that they're supposed to be providing cost-of-service rates. And the rate score is simply based on total annual revenues, based on the current customer base. Did that cover that enough?
I think at the very end, so at the very end, you said it's the current, current
Right.
population of
Service level.
Services, okay. So it doesn't take into account the, what we would expect to be a change over the course of the contract?
Nope.
Okay, I will flag that for future consideration when we get to discussion. So one other question, I have a couple of other questions. One is about what the other companies, so we have the description of what Recology is offering in terms of considering electrification of fleets by 2028. And so I wondered if you could describe in the RFP what the other two companies proposed and committed to in their RFP as far as fleet electrification? Not the side vehicles, but the actual trucks.
Certainly. Jeff and I just talked about that before the meeting, and he reviewed the RFPs, so I'm gonna hand it over to Jeff.
So, there we go. So I'd love to give you a five-second answer, but I don't think I can. If you could humor me, I'll describe the whole electrification issue. Because I'm a really big proponent of it, and I've been waiting for years for the opportunity to do an RFP that was based on having an opening for electric trucks. And if people think I'm being overly negative or everything, we've had an electric vehicle for 10 years in our family, so I'm there, believe me. So when we did the industry review on the RFP, we floated the idea of, let's try doing electrical vehicles right out of the hatch, right at the beginning of the contract. Can we do that? And I'd say the response from industry was lukewarm at very, very best. It was, you know, like, this is too soon. But we can do it probably within a couple of years. I think we're close. And so when I did the spec and the contract for what actually went out with the RFP, I said, we can start with older trucks. It's okay to continue to use trucks that are 10 to 12 years old. But we want, within a couple of years, we want to take a look at doing something by 2025. And that was the contract spec that went out in the RFP. And out of the three responses, we had both Recology and Republic talked about their current experience and their pilots they're doing. In the case of Recology, it was a Seattle pilot and a San Francisco pilot. In the case of Republic, it was Boise, which apparently is not a pilot. So they both covered the ground, but they didn't actually provide a proposal based on electric trucks, which was the really interesting thing to me, was like, okay, so you've got three different material streams going to three different locations, different turnarounds, it's complicated. What's it gonna cost us? Are we looking at a 10% increase in costs if we do this? The message I got was, we're not quite there, but they both met the spec in their proposals. They both identified, yes, they read the contract, and they said, we'll come back and we'll talk about electrification. We'll make it work. So then there was the evaluation process for the proposals, and a finalist was selected, and then we sat down and talked with them. And at that point, we knew what the rates were gonna be. And here's the curse of your last 10 years, is you had extremely low rates. And now all of a sudden, we're looking at a big rate hike, no matter who gets the contract. It's a huge rate. So all of a sudden, it was, I guess, from my perspective, it was a matter of, okay, how do we get electric in a prudent way on a timeline where you're not the first person past the thing, buying the most expensive trucks and making all the mistakes? How can we get electrification happening on a timeline that gets us past that first, past the post disadvantage? And that was one of the discussions with Recology is, okay, we still want to do electrification. We want to buy some time. We want to do it right, and we want to do it in a cost-effective manner. And that's how we came up with the 2028 date. And that's not to say that wasn't what Recology proposed in their proposal to the city. They met the 2025, same as Republic. But that was us as a negotiating team trying to put together the final package to bring to you that could have what I would consider to be a financially prudent electrification option. And the 2028 could actually be 2026 or 2025. If the industry hits a breakthrough and, you know, in the next two years, things are really rolling, it could happen earlier. But we had to come up with a number and an approach, and frankly, the magnitude of the rate increase scared me. And in our discussions, it was like, yeah, we're looking at a big rate increase. Do we want to go way out on this limb and push for electrification right away, or do we want to give ourselves a couple of extra years? So that's kind of the long version, but that's how we ended up with what's in front of you.
Thank you. All right, I have a couple more. One is, is there anything in any of the proposals, including Recology's, about lessening the burden on low-income individuals and their rates, or any consideration of that?
That's a great question. I think that's really a city responsibility, that we can look at that, and kind of, really, that goes across, you know, we had discussions on this on wastewater, but that's, you know, wastewater, water, solid waste, stormwater, that would be something we would work internally and somehow provide that. That wouldn't be something that haulers would do, to my understanding.
Okay, so it could potentially be a city rebate?
I would say typically in my contracts, now, I'm not gonna take time to look it up, but I almost always have a matched city utility billing policies. So I think if I recall, there might have been a low-income senior, low-income and senior discount, and that's in the contract, I'm fairly sure.
So it's in the contract, but it would be the city providing that rebate?
Yeah, the city's in the driver's seat, so they, the hauler provides the discount. So they, the hauler provides the discount, but it's in accordance with city policies. But I'll actually look that up right now, just so I'm giving you a solid answer.
Okay, but it is then negotiated in the contract with the hauler, seems?
I don't usually negotiate, I just, it's
It's just there.
It's what they do. They have to match city utility policies, but I'll check.
Okay.
Councilmember Hunt, if you were, I think, I was thinking more of the things above and beyond kind of a typical senior discount, where we discuss if we, for example, Cascade Water Alliance, some of you have been there, where it goes more, beyond the traditional reductions, that's what I was referring to, or that's something we would typically come up with that.
Right, okay. So my understanding, though, is that it's complying with the city's policy. So if the city's policy were to go above and beyond, then the hauler would provide the discount, but it would be because of the city's policy? Okay. All right. So one more question. There's this bucket of things that was scored that is sustainability, innovation, equity, community outreach, and education in one bucket. And I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if there was a greenhouse gas inventory or some quantitative approach to looking at the sustainability impacts of all of the things that were proposed? Because Recology did score, I believe, highest in that, but then it's also, there's so many things into that, in that bucket. I just wondered if we had, if we had the ability to look at emissions separately?
Yeah, we did not have any data metric for that category. It was, I would say, you know, qualitative scoring. So good point, though, that was another, I wasn't thinking of that as we developed this contract, but that is something we could do in another setting.
Okay, that's it for my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. Council President Walsh.
Thank you. I have one really small, silly question, and then another question. Looking at the, I think it's the proposed contract, I don't remember my notes, but Exhibit A shows a map that shows the city coverage area, and it includes Grand Ridge Drive, which is kind of the custom homes above Harrison Street in the Highlands, which is not actually within the city limits. And so I'm wondering if you can give me a sense of why those are included, whether that's historical, whether they're currently covered, and if they can be covered in our contract? I assume they would be because the only way to get into that area is through the city of Issaquah, so it's entirely possible that's the case, but I just wanted, no?
I think it's an operator, I think it's a map error, my understanding, but I will get back to you on that, because I don't know if I can.
Okay, great.
But I know what area you're talking about, and I don't believe that is part of the service area.
Yep, great. And then, you know, one of the proposals in here was a conversation about the Sustainability Fund and using that to bring down costs. So I'm wondering if you can talk about what the Sustainability Fund has been used in the past, and what we could potentially use it for if we didn't use it for this? So basically, what are we losing out on if we use this to subsidize services?
Sure. So again, the administrative fee is what we receive, let me start with that first, that's part of the Sustainability Fund. So we have a fund that you'll be reviewing as part of the budget process called the Sustainability Fund. And the administration fee is in that as the revenues that we receive from the hauler to do our three major endeavors. One is contract management with the hauler. Two is any work above and beyond for solid waste sustainability, like we were talking about managing grants and such. And three is sustainability program management. So that's what the administration fee is for. So we created a balance over the past few years, because there has been, was a reduction in staffing, the sustainability, office sustainability. So that's how the balance grew. What we've used, what we've used that balance for in 2022 is for two things. One is for Orca Cards, for commute trip reduction, and also to support, you know, Monica's Here Today, our homelessness program. So that was for 2022. So this can come back, and this will be a question for you, for the whole fund, as part of the 2023, 24 budget deliberations, on how to use that remaining fund balance. Do we, you know, if we didn't use it, so your question was, if we didn't use it for these, the reduction, it's really fair game, so to speak. It is a fund, since it has come from the administration fee, to my knowledge, and this is something I can work on with Susie in finance, I don't believe there are restrictions for that fund, since we're not a solid waste enterprise, so I believe it can really be used for other things. But 2022, yeah, just 2022 to recap, that fund balance, or the fund, is being used for the three things we typically do, the contract management, sustainability management, climate action plan, and then in addition to that, for 2022, the Orca Cards and homelessness support.
Council President?
Yes, voice in my head. Wally, do you have something to add?
I'm not there this evening. If I may, maybe just expand upon the various comments a little bit. I think over many years, the Sustainability Fund has funded a wide range of programs through our former offices, sustainability. I think the administration's looking at this new contract as an opportunity to perhaps refocus those costs along the lines that Gary just described. But really, it's up to the council to, I think, make a determination of what you'd like as funded. It's a programmatic issue as well, not just where the money is coming from, but what you'd like to see done. We talked this evening about outreach with solid waste, but of course, there's a whole group of other sustainability projects. I think it comes down to a policy decision with the council, how broad you'd like to go with some of the programmatic issues, and then once you decide that, where you think the appropriate funding sources are.
Are you good?
I'm good. Thank you, Wally.
Thank you, City Administrator. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. First, Gary, I'd like to thank you and your team for the work you did on this project. I know that reviewing an RFP and putting it all together, and then reviewing all the proposals, is work that's over and above your normal weekly, monthly work plan and workload, so I know that it was extra for you. I want to thank all the members that took time from their different departments to also give their input to this project. I wanted to get a little more information on some of the items on Page 4 of the staff report, which talk about the primary reasons for selection of Recology, based on the city's, the evaluation process that you went through. And I won't go through all of them, but could you touch upon the ways that it was conveyed to you that Recology would be committed to items in our climate action plan? You say they have the ability to serve as a partner towards us meeting those goals.
Certainly, yeah, I can, so I have up on the screen there, I think this is a mimic of what's on Page 4. So on the action plan, the two areas where they provided the information on here was their interview process and at the field tour. We dug into those quite a bit on those. And what their responses, what I valued from their responses is, I'd say, starting at the high end, the company model, right, of what we really took from that, what, you know, I'm speaking for my evaluation team here, of course. Their commitment for being, I'm almost having what we have here at Issaquah, salmon values, really, to be a recycling and composting company first, as compared to, you know, a waste company. They're really focused on that, and that, again, when we were at the facility, that, again, I just go back to that, you know, and if you haven't toured that, it's kind of hard to describe, but when you walk in, you kind of get that sense that they're walking their talk. I guess that's how I under, you know, felt, and I think the evaluation committee felt, when we entered there, when we had that conversation with them, that, you know, you see it in writing, right, but you hear it on the phone, you talk with people, but then when you go there and you see what they're doing and their commitment that they have, I think that was where, where my scoring for that category really came from, if that helps.
Great, thank you. The other one I wanted, excuse me, the other one I wanted to touch on is one of the differentiating, differentiating, differentiating points? The things that made it different between the two of them was that local call center with robust staffing levels. Could you comment on some of the observations you made and give us a little more color there?
Yeah, no, I think this was a real interesting one, that, from, I think, their perspective, that they provided to us, and then, and then some of the direct experience that we've had here as staff. So during, you know, it's part of the written proposal, and it's part of the interview process, and less so as a facility, and then as some of the reference checks. But what I wanted to mention back is, again, that the 2020, 2020 performance from all haulers, and what I really heard from, I think I contacted over 10, 10 references for the whole period, that all of the haulers had some trouble with the cities during those times. And again, I'm sure it's not just their solid waste, it was a very, very tough time with COVID. But one thing they committed to do with that, when we were having issues, was to expand the number of staffing in the local area, and also have really, and what they showed us is really detailed, what I'd call playbooks, for those local staff, of what is the cause about, how we provide the service, what services we have, and really, you know, incorporate that message to all their staff. And I think I arrived here in February of last year, and March started, you know, working more closely with Recology. And again, as I said, all the haulers, seemingly, happened some issues over there, but over the next three to four months, you know, we put the word robust here, that the staffing levels were even higher than they were pre-pandemic. And just the response, the issues that were coming to my attention just plummeted. So I really appreciated that, and a couple of things that, again, just on both those that, the walking the talk is kind of what we, what we kind of heard from them, and that what we also experienced in myself, and what I've heard from other folks that have contracts with Recology at this time.
Great, thank you. You talked a little bit about a playbook, and one of the problems that all the haulers had during the periods of inclement weather was missing customers at times, or missing certain areas of the city, depending on the elevation and the severity of the snow that was coming down. Under this new contract, we have a section which is titled "Incliment Weather." Are there any changes to that section under this new contract that our customers will see in the event that they are missed one week? Could you comment on that?
Jeff, we just talked about this this afternoon as well, and I think you dug up the exact part of the contract.
Well, I looked at it, I couldn't actually remember what I had changed. I had generally gone through and upgraded, because I have a 10-year-old contract, and so now it's like, I change words here and there and figure out. I do know that it was a matter of like, okay, so we need recovery if it's a one-week miss, or if it's within the next day, we need to have drop boxes put out, all those sorts of things. And then it's just tailored a little bit. So I think, I think my overall objective was to generally match what was there, but update the language, and I couldn't tell you what was a substantive change in service from the customer's point of view versus what was just my tuning the language.
Okay, let me see if I can give a leading question a little bit more for you. If a customer's missed in Sammamish, the contract reads that the hauler will come back, you know, the next day they're back in service, right? I think that's how it is. In this contract, in Issaquah, in the 10-year-old contract we had, if a customer's missed, typically, the hauler would come back a week later, and customers certainly could do that and add, you know, there are two weeks of garbage, and it was perfectly acceptable by the hauler. Are we changing that under this contract so that if there is a miss, our customers will see anything new in terms of service, should this contract be adopted?
I don't think so. And I also, I can't remember, is, are some of the services in Sammamish every other week? I seem to remember they were, because I usually go with a different approach for cities that have an every-other-week collection cycle, because the stakes are entirely different if you get missed than a weekly city. So I can't remember that.
Then a customer, we do have, we have attract changes from the very beginning, so we'd be happy to provide that tomorrow, to get the exact, exact answer on how it's changed.
That'd be great, because we don't hear from customers until there's a problem, and then we hear from what it seems like, all of our customers, all at once. So if you could let us know how inclement weather might be changing, if it is, under this contract, so we can be able to tell our customers what to expect should they call us, and tell our voters what's going on. So, thank you. That concludes my questions.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I realized in my long first question, I had a part of the question that I don't think I heard the answer to. So do we know how, population-wise, how many customers are using the multifamily, the dumpsters in Issaquah versus the single-family customers currently, the current population base?
So it's the multifamily by number versus the
Yeah.
I can get back to you on that. I know we have that data.
Okay. I think that would be helpful, because there is such a big difference in the cost savings with the different proposals for the multifamily. So if we already are serving so many more people with that multifamily dumpster option, I think that would be helpful for us to know. Okay, and then, I have one other question. So at the Adjustment to Base Contract slide, it says Recology will expand range of recyclables collected to roughly match current contract, and I found that confusing. I wondered if you could explain, because it says expand, but then it also says roughly match what they're already doing.
Right. So with the RFP, what we put out was a list of only, essentially only, the recyclables that have really good markets, that are core recyclables, is what I'd call them. And then we asked separately, what would the price be to add on an expanded range of materials that more closely mimics what you have right now? And so that way, the base proposals didn't include your current services. If we had stuck with that, you would have, your residents would have seen a much reduced range of recyclables, unless we exercised that alternative. And so when we were having our contract finalization discussions, we said, look, we don't want to go backwards on the range of recyclables collected. We want to restore what you're actually collecting right now, and we want you to do it at no additional cost. And they said, yes. So that was part of that whole discussion. Again, putting out a base contract that had just the core services with the added cost of the alternative, including expanding recycling, identified, and then we, when we were finalizing the contract, we did that.
Okay, so to clarify, for the person that has been a recyclable stuff, they can put, they, if we went with the contract as proposed, they would be able to put the same things in it after the contract renewal?
There may be one or two things different, like plastic bags, I can't remember. There were a couple of things, but there's a list of like, yeah, there's a list of like 15 or plus things, and they're essentially all there. There might be one or two changes, but it's a full list.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Marks?
So I want to make sure I understood and heard that, that I want to make sure that I understand that I heard that correctly. There was not a specific cost associated with going from what you said was sort of the core markets, which I assume are metal and glass, to going to sort of the full suite? You said we'd like to scope this out, and they just said, we'll put it in?
Yeah. That was part of finalizing the contract. We asked for them for some concessions, and that was one of them.
So the converse wouldn't be, if we got rid of collecting things that aren't actually separated out in the end of the day, we wouldn't potentially see any cost benefit?
You might, you might see some, yeah.
It really seems like the, the emerging consensus is that glass and metal are the only things that at the end of the day are actually properly recycled, right?
No, it's, it's, you know, basically all the fibers and glass and all the metals and all the plastic containers. Plastic containers are actually quite valuable for number ones and twos, but the more extraneous ones start to go downhill pretty fast.
Got it.
So yeah, the, the core recyclables are basically those. So it's a lot of the main recyclables, but then you have all these other things, like you have household batteries and you have styrofoam and you start adding those things and that's what we classed as the extras that we wanted the separate price for.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember, I just would add that any, you know, it's a really good education process to go to a facility of what call MRF facility, Matillias Recovery Facility. You really get, I know I've been educated a couple of times on that, on exactly kind of what you're talking about and what values, how the plastics are separated because of the different commodity values. It's pretty, actually pretty exciting.
Council President Walsh?
Thank you. Along those lines, hearkening back to my childhood where we had separated containers and the consumer did the separation and there wasn't the cross-contamination. Did we consider that? Is that something that any of the providers are offering in order to get a cleaner, cleaner stream of recyclables?
You got this one, yeah. Joe, you got it, you got it.
Well, I have something funny to tell you and that is, one of the last communities in Western Washington that has three bins separated recycling is Bellingham. And just recently, like within a few months, all those materials that are collected separately are now put into a combined truck and taken down to Woodinville, dumped on the tipping floor with everything else. So the answer's, the answer's no, is that the, the customer demand for containerization, for cart-based containerization is really high. That's really popular. And then the hauler's perspective on balancing out collection costs versus processing costs drives it in that direction so that virtually nobody is running facilities that would really benefit from, from separated recyclables. And the worst thing for me is to see all those carefully separated materials getting just lumped together and run through a regular MRF. So I, I sympathize, but that's just not the way the industry's gone.
Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you. Just a really quick question. From some of the questions and action items that I've, I've seen you take down during the Q and A section tonight, it does seem like we might need another study session touch on, or I guess it would be a committee now, not a study session. I wanted to ask, does that concern you at all? Is there a strict timeline that we're following or are you satisfied with there potentially being another council touch on this so we could receive?
Whatever, whatever you need from us council members.
Okay, so we're not constrained by a timeline or anything like that. We're in a good place.
We want, you want to proceed in a timely manner, but it, you know, goes back to whatever you need to do, need from us, you will get and we'll, we'll make the time accordingly.
Great, thanks.
Deputy Council President?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The administration would recommend that this go to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. There certainly are, we appreciate the, the conversation this evening, but I think there are some significant questions that we need to come back and bring answers to. So Councilmember Ray, if you'd like to perhaps collect those questions, I think we have probably a pretty good list. We could probably try to recite it back if you'd like to save the time. And then our recommendation would be that it goes to the June, or excuse me, the May meeting of the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee and then back to the full council hopefully for our final vote in June.
That meeting will be held May 10th, I think.
The committee meet on May 10th, correct?
Unless there's objection, I think that makes sense to give it a little more, a little more time and there's a fair number of questions that are still out there. So unless anyone objects, let's suggest to the administration that we put that on the June, I'm sorry, was it June, May 10th? Infrastructure and Transportation Committee agenda. All right. But because I am process-bound, we do have a moment for additional public comment here. So as we finish our questions, there's anybody in the room who would like to make public comment? We can do that now.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council and to your illustrious staff. My name's Logan Harvey. Well, formerly Vice Senior Manager, now, now Government Relations Manager with Recology in County. So I just wanted to address some of the questions that we heard, specifically yours around multifamily. This is something that we take really seriously because we do see a lot of times that multifamily gets missed in some of the communications that happen. We have fairly robust proposals in other cities and ones that we, we would bring to bear in Issaquah with this new contract as well and some that we've already been doing in the city. Property managers are important to us because they're really the eyes and ears that are there. Having that kind of on-the-ground partner is, is critical, but a lot of times we, we encounter multifamilies that the property manager either doesn't want to engage or has difficulty engaging. This is something that multifamily residents experience a lot. We developed a number of systems and tools that have allowed us to kind of work around that. So one of the things we designed, I didn't bring enough, I apologize, but these, these door hangers I'll leave here are things that will go door-to-door to provide information to residents. It's in two languages and so we'll provide that across the board for all, all residents there. Really important piece of tool, or really important, important tool for us. It's also a very visual tool and something that really helps. We also go to the bins and provide signage, so the plastic bag stickers, other signage that's there. When we do have engagement with the property manager, managers, it can get a little bit more robust. We'll do things like come to the property and do a presentation for residents that are interested. Unfortunately, a lot of times we get people who are excellent recyclers that show up for those and not like the person who's throwing, you know, half a burrito into the recycling bin. So that's kind of, you know, a deal that we work around, but you know, at least coming to the door can kind of help with that. In other cities, we've, we've done some pilot programs that would be interesting to bear. We have a slotted lid program that we've been running in Sea-Tac, which we've seen bring contamination down at certain properties from 30-plus percent down to below five. So it's been very successful and something that we're working to, to continue piloting in new cities. So excited to bring that as an option. Other things we've done, we've set up a table next to a recycling bin and just waited for people to saunter by, to go drop their recycling off and educated them there on the spot. That's kind of a more extreme measure, but we do do that at times. And then on the question regarding, Councilmember Joe's question regarding the Climate Action Plan and how we would partner there, for us really, I like to look at properties and see where, who has the most garbage and the least recycling and composting. Then we go and address those properties. We go work with them, talk to them about how they could improve their recycling and a lot of times that can save money, right? So we don't charge on the recycling side, it's embedded in the garbage rate. And so if they move material over, reduce that garbage, you're going to see a lower monthly cost, which is a benefit to multifamily and businesses. We're also proposing an annual review of every single multifamily and commercial bin to go in visually inspect with a GoCanvas audit tool. We're going to look inside the bin, see what's there, see what the contamination issues are. We'll provide monthly reports on, on that. The ones that have large amounts of contamination, that first annual review, we'll go and do continued review on a, on a monthly basis. And, and so we don't just review, we go inside and talk to people about contamination. We, we mail them a physical letter, snail mail through the USPS with, with, with images of what we found. And then we offer educational resources to both multifamily businesses, anybody else that we have. The other thing that we can do is with our store, we provide a local location for people to bring things like batteries, styrofoam, other materials like that, which definitely improves the diversion rate. And we should have a lot of experience around encouraging composting and other materials. So we're, we're really excited to, to continue this contract and to keep working with the city should council choose to, to go with us. And there's a lot of ways we'd like to work with you. And, and thank you so much for your time and your questions and your consideration of this important topic. I'll leave these with, I guess, the deputy clerk and he can pass them along to you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to comment at this point?
Council President, councilors, thanks for having us tonight. My name's Steve Brum. I'm the Regional Vice President for Recology for the Pacific Northwest. And you know, on behalf of the, the 350 employee owners we have in the Pacific, excuse me, in the Puget Sound region, we thank you for the last decade of partnership we've had and it's really, we're proud of, you know, having this relationship with the city. It is, this has been a really good process. I'd like to reiterate that we appreciate the staff and, and Jeff's involvement in that. It is an exciting time in our industry. I think in the 20 years I've been in this business, I've never seen so many things changing and going on and so much innovation and technology that's happening. And it's, I think besides, you know, loving my company, like my colleague over here has, as she loves her company, I think we all really love this industry and we love being able to have a part in helping the city reach its sustainability and, and climate goals. So and just a couple of other things I just wanted to point out is, you know, with regards to the electric vehicles, we have been piloting two rearload, rearload collection vehicles that are electric in the city of Seattle. They, they currently run around downtown and they do the litter cans. They, we learned a lot from them. They came early on in the process. The range has been, the range hasn't been very good. That's why we use them in the downtown core servicing alleys and collecting those cans. Now, we, we have an opportunity with a new vehicle and Anthony mentioned it a few moments ago, we have a new vehicle that's coming online that we, that we are intending to pilot in Issaquah once it arrives here in the next month or two. That was something that was going to happen regardless of the outcome of this process. We determined Issaquah was a great testing ground for us in terms of distance from our yard, topography, just diversity and topography. It's got some tight spaces and then not so tight spaces. So we're excited to bring that onboard and, and we're excited with, you know, should council choose to move forward with the existing contract that's in front of you, you know, to work with the city in the future on electrification. We are excited about getting away from fossil fuels and, but we do want to do it responsibly and in a manner that is efficient and, and safe for, for the city. And finally, I just wanted to just call out that we are, we are the only 100% employee-owned company in, in the waste industry. And that's important because that really solidifies our community approach and involvement. The, you know, our, our company, our company's earnings dividends go back to employees. We are the shareholders and it really, it really does change the culture and puts a different level of quality in our service. And, and that's something we, we don't take lightly is our, is our relationship to the communities. And finally, again, just want to thank council and staff for, for a great process and thanks for having us and we really appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, Steve. All right. City Clerk, is there anybody online that, that has raised their virtual hands?
No, Councilmember Ray, there is nobody in attendance who has raised their hand to speak.
Okay, great. Well, then we'll, we'll move on. I know we're going to send this off to committee in mid-May, but I do want to just take a moment. If anyone has any comments that they'd like to share at this time, we'll do that. So we'll start with Councilmember Hunt and then we'll go to Council President Walsh.
All right, thank you. Well, I will not serve on that committee and so I would like to pass along my comments for the consideration of the committee when this comes before the Infrastructure Committee. So firstly, we heard a lot of things from the speakers today, but in the, in the memo that we have, it says, as far as electric vehicles go, Recology agreed to use electric vehicles for contract management, route supervision, container delivery, and to revisit the feasibility of root electrification, root vehicle electrification by July 1st, 2028. So at least in what we have in our materials, it says, the only commitment is to revisit the feasibility of root vehicle electrification by July 1st, 2028. And for me, that is not an adequate level of commitment to electrification. So I would like that strengthened. I would like the committee to consider ways that we could strengthen that in the contract because our community is very dedicated to climate action and that came out in the survey. It's right up there in agreement with that residents did not want to go to every other week collection. The, right behind that in the survey is that Issaquah aims to implement best practices when it comes to environmental measures and policies. Would you be interested in seeing the city work with the hauling and collection service provider to encourage the use of electric vehicles in the future? Assuming that is the, the wording in the survey as well, it doesn't refer to the next contract, it's in this contract and this is a long contract. So I think this is our opportunity to strengthen that commitment to electrification. I think the community has specifically supported as important that we encourage this and I would like to see that in the, in the contract. The next thing that I would like to comment on is the rates. I think it is worth considering in, in greater detail, the difference between the multifamily associated rates and the single-family rate. So the multifamily rate, depending on what proportion of people in Issaquah are served using that method of, of solid waste service, I think that that is potentially compelling because we want to have the best possible deal for the most people that we can. So I, I would like to, to know how that breaks down and I would also like to consider the future trend because single-family zones in Issaquah have single-family houses there and we expect a lot of the future growth in Issaquah to be in the multifamily-zoned parts of Issaquah and be in those more multifamily types of housing. So that together with the fact that in the Republic Services Contract, their rate actually went down for the kind of service that would be for those multifamily homes, I think that's compelling and worth consideration and, and worth better understanding because I think it impacts a lot of people. I would be interested in looking at a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. I think that would be a great more, a more quantitative rather than qualitative way to look at sustainability. So if we could look at that in the future, I, I think that would be good. I understand if that wasn't included this time around. And then lastly, the call center was identified as an important piece of, of the Recology RFP. I, I wonder too if we could consider customer satisfaction because I think while, while all companies I'm sure had challenges over the last couple of years, it is important that not only do we have people to respond to the complaints and, and such, but also that people are happy with the services. So I would like to have some sort of metrics in there about customer satisfaction in addition to knowing that there is a well-staffed call center. And thank you for all of your work and thank you for fielding all of my questions this evening. Gary presented all the information very well, so appreciate it and looking forward to hearing what the council committee says once they've done their review. Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. I think I'm going to end up echoing a lot of what Councilmember Hunt said, but survey results, survey results, survey results. We heard loud and clear from the community what was important to them and we absolutely 100% kept to a weekly service in the contract. We didn't get there on electric vehicles. And so I'd like to understand, I, I mean, I loved the transparency in your process and showing how the ratings were and what all of that was. I think similar to something Councilmember Hunt said earlier about including the, you know, what was it, the like reactions and customer outreach with sustainability to me are two very different things. And I'd love to see if possible, those metrics for each of those, or at least the qualitative analysis, broken out and weighted by what was important to the community. Because we very much as a community understand that sustainability- Because we very much, as a community, understand that sustainability and electrification in this is super important to us and it's super important to us now in 2022. I can't imagine how important that's going to be to us in 2032. And so, keeping that in mind as we're doing this evaluation, I think is super important. Similarly, on that evaluation idea, if 60 points is being given to the group with the best rates, but only 10 points is being given to those other things, that, that to me suggests maybe our values are a little bit off in that sense as far as what the city of Issaquah values. And then the, the other proposals there, I'm fine with doing an administrative fee of 6%. I think that was well explained and I appreciate that. I don't like the cost jumping so dramatically, but I think we can have a really good community conversation about why that is. And I'd really like us to have that conversation to talk about, you know, how we're subsidizing consumer purchasing and all of those things. For us, I cannot see the city of Issaquah using the sustainability fund balance that we have right now to lower costs to residents because all that's doing is helping them say, "Maybe I don't need to recycle as much. I don't need to lower my costs and feel that pain." And so, I think, I don't want to see the city of Issaquah subsidizing the trash rates in that way. And so, I would just think about what our, what our priorities are, what else we could use that fund with and, yeah, have a conversation about why the rates are increasing. Thanks.
Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. I'm also not on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, but I will, so, share some thoughts. You know, people are going to be mad about the rates. They're going to be really mad. We had, we had a great deal for a decade. I mean, it's one of those good news, bad news. Hooray to those intrepid councilmembers 10 years ago who came up with such a great rates structure, but, yeah, so they're going to be mad. And lowering it 2% isn't going to make a difference. It's not going to make them less mad. All it's going to do is drain a really important fund that has, just because we haven't figured out what we want to do with it yet, doesn't mean we should use it to, I mean, the concern to me is, people wouldn't notice. We would take a million dollars that could have been used for forward-thinking sustainability projects and it won't, it wouldn't really dent the shock that they're going to get from these rate increases if, if, if that, if the rate schedule is, you know, if it really is 2%. And then the final thing is, I want to echo the interest in putting more meat on the subject of EVs. I want to be careful. I don't want us to be bleeding edge on this. I mean, the reason I asked the question about the hydraulic brake system is, it didn't work. And, you know, if we had been counting on that to improve the efficiency of our fleet, we would have been out of luck. And so, what I'd like to see is some sort of, and then again, this is just advice to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, some sort of trigger that says, "Look, when some city has gotten to some level of implementation of this, then we should look at that as well." Right? When somebody has successfully done 10% of their fleet, or I don't know, I don't know what the number is. But, you know, I want to see somebody else be successful with it and then, and then go gung-ho for it, right? I just don't want us to believe that we're going to get the impact that we want when the technology is so fresh and these are gigantic machines and we have steep hills and we want to make sure that, you know, all the systems work very well for we unleash them on our hills. But, once somebody else is doing it effectively, I want us to be like, like, I just don't want us to be bleeding edge. I want us to be like one step back from bleeding edge. So, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you very much. I'll be kind of brief since I am on the committee, so I'll just say some of the thoughts that are on my mind right now. First and foremost, Gary, Jeff, everyone else on the Evaluation Committee, I think an excellent, an excellent, well job done. I've always been very impressed with our staff that work in utilities and I think it shows up very finely here, so thank you very much for all that work. Going through some of the questions, I'm, yeah, I'm definitely fine with the admin fee down to 6%. I'm not sure where I'm at with regard to using sustainability fund balance to help pave that runway, if you will, for the rate increase, but perhaps there are alternatives that we can look at with regards to other funds in the city. I think it's worth continuing the conversation. I don't know why we would write it off right away. Even if it is a small amount, it's an amount. And if it's going to be a big amount, people might not be more mad just because it's a little bit less expensive, but it could be the difference for some families here in Issaquah. So, I think that's worth exploring more in the very least. I think largely, I'm, I'm fairly happy with the proposal that's in front of us when it comes to the compromise that we've kind of met with regard to our rates, our goals, providing a dependable service for our residents. But, I do agree that we have some open questions that require more conversations about what direction we want to go. How aggressive we want to be with regard to fleet electrification is certainly one that rises to the top for me. And actually, I wrote this down because I think Jeff said it well, though. You know, how do we get electric in a prudent way along a timeline that gets us past our expected rate increase, you know, heading into a new contract? Or, do we want to push for an electric fleet right away or do we want to build a runway, essentially? But then, the question in my mind is, what does that runway look like? I think Councilmember Hunt brings up a good point about the current language in the proposal, simply saying that we revisit the issue by 2028. So, if there's a chance we won't actually have progress on an actual electric fleet by 2028, then that's something we need to know in order to make an informed decision, even if it is 1, 2. You know, I just think that that's information that we need to know in order to make a good decision in front of us. And then also, thank you, Councilmember Joe, for bringing this up too. I had emailed you before the meeting about this too, but I do think we need to make sure that we're following best and emergency, best and emerging practices, also lessons learned when it comes to inclement weather. I think generally, the Issaquah community has been very supportive, largely because of rates, but also very supportive of how waste management has been done here in Issaquah, except for when it came to like recent snowpocalypse. So, are there any lessons learned from that? Some mammoth, I thought, was an interesting beacon of light that maybe we can look into a little bit more. Is there anything that came, came out of that contract that potentially we could emulate here in Issaquah? Or, do we think we're meeting, you know, best practices with regard to inclement weather already? So, those are the things that are buzzing around in my head right now and I'm sure there'll be much more for our committee to look into. And thanks very much again, appreciate it. Oh, and thank you very much to all the public commenters that came out too. We really appreciate it. It's a super fascinating subject that not everyone gets to dive into detail, so appreciate you being here in person too.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Rounds two, and I will be brief. I didn't touch on my thoughts on the sustainability fund use. I agree with Councilmember Martz. I, I think 2%, if that is what it ends up being, is, is not going to be the difference. And if we wanted to think about what difference people would notice, I think we should look at the different rates that are from the different providers because there, there were substantive differences in those, in those proposals. The 2%, I don't think, I think that would end up using a lot of this fund and it is currently used for ORCA cards, social services, homelessness efforts in 2022. It's used for a number of things, but I do think we should get it, I think we should have a policy around, a policy-based discussion around the use of this fund, what we want to see it achieve and what we want to do with it. But, I don't think spending it down in this way is prudent. I think we should have that conversation first and it's probably a separate conversation. And then also, I didn't mention, but I'm, I'm interested in, as again, it's probably, it's a separate conversation, ways that we can reduce the, specifically reduce the burden on low-income individuals, making sure that this rate increase doesn't, that, you know, this rate increase comes at a time where there's increasing costs across the board for housing and lots of other expenses. And so, just am interested in what the city can do. It's a separate policy question about reducing this extra burden on low-income folks. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. I am on the, is it, is it the tick? Is that?
All the way to the bottom.
Not sure that's an improvement over its previous name, but we'll go with it for right now. So, I am, so I'm going to keep my remarks somewhat brief, but a couple of thoughts. I'm in agreement that the 2% coming out of the sustainability fund balance is not going to make much of a difference, but I am wondering if, following up on Councilmember Hunt's comments, if we could look to that money in terms of setting up a fund for low-income to help low-income residents who may be adversely impacted. So, just something to explore there. And similarly, with the electrification, I think I tend to agree with Councilmember Martz that we need to go slow. However, I've also admired very much the, the urgency that Councilmember Hunt brings to these. And often, we move ahead faster and we actually get there better because we have some urgency. So, I'd sort of like to find a middle way, if we could, some kind of balance between those two points of view so that we put a little bit more urgency into it, but also take into account that we've got to deal with technology and, as was also mentioned, the topography of Issaquah. Maybe not a barrier, but something that we're going to, it's going to be a challenge for us to, to meet that. So, so, I, the rest of my comments, I'm going to hold off because I get another chance to talk at, on May the 10th. So, I really appreciate, I've said to Gary before and I will repeat, what a monumental job you've done. It's, it's really good. The information was very clear and that is a very, very complex contract, so kudos to you and to all the people on the staff that worked on that. And also to everybody who commented tonight. Lots of things to think about and appreciate all of the public input. Thank you.
All right. Any, any final comments? I think we'll wrap this one up. Gary, Jeff, thank you very much. Great presentation, all of the public comments. Sure appreciate all of that. And we'll move on to, our next agenda item is ID 1037, Human Services Grant. And City Administrator Bob Kowitz has asked, yeah, asked me to take a temperature of the body and Monica, I hate to do this to you, but to see if you wanted to postpone this to a committee meeting or if you wanted to hear this tonight. Because we, we spent a fair amount of time, well-spent on the last topic, so City Administrator just wanted me to ask. So, Councilmember De Michelle?
Oh, please, let's go ahead.
Right. Then, then we'll go ahead. Then, the second question, process-wise, is, does anybody want five minutes? All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess, so we'll stand in recess for, until, we're going to make it seven minutes till 8:40. we're gonna make it seven minutes till 8:40. We are back from our recess, and we are going to pick up the agenda with agenda, with item ID 1037, Human Services Grant, presented by Monica Negrilla, our Human Services Manager. Monica, thank you for bearing with us through the previous agenda item. So, take it away.
My pleasure. Thank you so much. Good evening, Councilmembers. This is Monica Negrilla, Human Services. We also have online our Human Services Coordinator, Hannah Roberts, and as always, our Parks and Community Services Director, Jeff Watling, is also online. So, we are all available to answer questions at the end of the presentation. And so with that, I'm gonna try to pick up the speed a little bit, but please slow me down if, if needed. So, I know it is late and you have other agenda items as well. So, tonight, this is the first time this agenda item is in front of you, so we hope to get some feedback from you regarding the Human Services Grants program. And since this is the first time we are presenting it, we are hoping for a broader overview and also conversation, discussion with you. We really are seeking your feedback and input. So, the specific questions that we have for you tonight are, one, what are the city council's goals with the Human Services Grants program? Should we consider a one-time change in the funding allocations for the 2023-2024 funding cycle? Should we come back to you and propose perhaps establishing a policy that would be more like a long-term, a more proactive approach that, that would change from time to time, let's say based on a cost of living adjustment, or demographics, or both, so forth? Or we are looking for your suggestions, should we consider something else? Should we change nothing at this point? So, all of these are questions that we would love to explore with you tonight. And so with that, to help set a little bit the stage and provide some background, I was hoping that I can talk with you a little bit and provide an overview of the previous human services investments and impact the city has made. Perhaps provide a brief, brief summary of the COVID-19 pandemic response that the city provided in human services. I remember those times when we all worked together the last couple of years quite a bit. Talk a little bit about the organization, known capacity, and last but not least, touch a little bit on how this aligns with the Human Services Strategic Plan. So, on I'm going, on the screen you can see the Human Services Investments over the last decade, starting with 2011. You can see the, the funding level that was provided in Human Services Grants and where we are today. I do want to mention that, just, just a brief note here, you know, over the years, the Human Services investments in local and regional nonprofits at the city have been evolving. The Human Services Commission has been making recommendations to you and the mayor, and these have been more recently included in the budget process. I do want to note one thing, and a reminder, because I'm sure you have heard this in previous human services-related presentations, we in Human Services are part of a collaborative with 15 other cities, and this provides an opportunity to our nonprofit partners to apply to city funds from a variety of different cities using one single application. But on, on the same time, it also provides cities a unique opportunity to still have their own funding process and still have their own financial piece, where each city manages their own funds, they have their own decision-making process, and they also manage their public funds to ensure that funds from their respective cities go to residents from those particular cities. So in other words, for example, the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, a great organization here locally in Issaquah, they also receive funding from the city of Sammamish. But when the city of Sammamish funds the, the organization, they are making sure that the contract that they enter with, the funds from the city of Sammamish go to serve the residents from the city of Sammamish. The same would go for the city of Issaquah. So it's an interesting opportunity and collaboration, where it is a collaboration between multiple cities, but it's also very unique for each of the cities. So with that, I'm gonna move forward next, to talk a little bit about the Human Services impacts. And what I would like to highlight here, and what you see on the screen, is an example of the previous funding cycle from 2021 and 2022, where we had $500,000 in funding available, but as you may see, the requests were a little bit over 1.3 million. So, and this has been the pattern over the last several years. Always, the resources are much, much higher than the funding that we have available, right? And so, with that, it is a challenge that the Human Services Commission has had over the years in balancing the help that they want to provide to nonprofit agencies, but also making the impact that we all want in the community, right? So, the approach that the Human Services Commission has been taking was to provide for a broader reach, to fund as many organizations as possible, but perhaps just partially fund them. And again, there are pluses and minuses either way, and I don't know that there's a right answer, but I'm just noting those that we are happy to have conversations and have your feedback on those as well. And then, again, having that broader reach and more limited impact, I think it's also worth to highlight the fact that typically than, you know, having smaller grants, let's say, the lowest amount of grant, it's $4,000. The average grant that we give, it's about $8,000. We, the funding that we provide represents a very, very small amount of the organization's budget. Often it's 1%, less than 10%. Not to, not to say that it doesn't help the agencies, any help, it's helpful to those agencies. But when we want to try to move the needle on certain outcomes that we want to implement at the city, it's just, makes it more challenging to do that, right? So, I think those are my comments on this slide. Next, I'm gonna highlight, just very briefly, again, thanks to you, City Council, over the last couple of years during the COVID pandemic response, our city has dedicated additional funds to serve human service needs. So what you see on the screen are funds that were provided with your help to nonprofit agencies in addition to the regular Human Services Grants. So in 2020, we had a total of $575,000 provided. In 2021, we had $618,000. In your agenda packet, you have a table with a breakdown on all of those, and I'm happy to go over in detail for the sake of time. I'm just gonna move forward on that. Please. Yes.
Director, how do we measure impact? I guess, you know, if I look at the $500,000, and it helped 4,029 people on your last slide, you know, that, that means we're spending, on average, $124 per person. I know that's not a really good measure, because some money goes to more important programs, or programs that have more of an impact on population. How do we know that the money that we're putting out each year is making a difference? And I don't want you to answer that in detail right now, but I think that's one thing that, you know, I think we'd like to see, but if you have just a quick comment.
Right. Thank you so much. So, that's a great question. So currently, we have one way, and when we contract with the agencies, we ask them, the contract entails number of residents that they are serving with that amount of money, a number of services that they provide. And then they also have to report an outcome. So, for example, if we, if we provide rental assistance, then we also want to, the outcome of that being how many people were prevented from becoming homeless, for example. So then, they need to present a percentage of that at the end of the year. So, we have the individual outcomes from each of the agencies. What the challenge is for us is to put them in a city-level outcome, where we can, we can show that they are actually moving the needle, right? Because it's the small, sometimes with $5,000, sometimes we contract for five residents being provided services, right? Thank you for that question. Okay, so moving on, next.
Thank you. Monica, another question from Councilmember D. Michelle.
Yes, I'll settle down. Thank you.
That's okay. Going back to the other slide, I just wanna, is, is my understanding that the least amount that's, that an agency can apply for is 5,000?
Four.
4,000. So 4,000 is the, it's, there wouldn't be any grants lower than that, but not only that, no agency would be able to apply for less than that.
Yes.
Okay. And then the other one, estimated number of Issaquah residents supported with grant funding. So, again, that would be, even if we gave a big regional agency like Hope Link funding, it would be, that's the number that they were actually able to help that lived in Issaquah?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So each agency will only, yes, even if it's a regional agency, when they contract with us, they will contract only for Issaquah residents.
And then we get the statistics back from them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Isn't there fundamentally a second bucket of Human Services dollars? Because there's, there's this, which comes out of the structured council-generated Human Services budget, but isn't there also a list of Human Services expenditures, third-party expenditures, that's like a mayoral level spend? And that's a whole separate pot of money, not, not insignificant pot of money, right?
There used to be that pot of money, and I believe with the last funding, with the last budget cycle, so those were, used to call, be called community grants.
Right.
And I think those were folded in the larger Human Services budget, and I think with the staffing expansion, some of that money was used to actually fund the homeless outreach position that we have this year.
Then I'm not sure your dollar amounts are right, because if you can go back and show your dollar amounts for a second, it was a very, very big deal, when in 2017, we, I think it occurred before 2017, we reached $100 per resident. It was, it was a big deal because it was a target, no, $10 per resident, sorry, $10 per resident. That was a very big deal because it was, I think it was a lot earlier than 2016, because it was something that Mayor Friesinger had wanted, and it took us a while to get there. We were at like $7 a resident, $8, $9, but it was always just in this core amount. So I, I think that there's expenditures for Human Services that aren't, I think, showing up here in some of those other things that you were just talking about.
Right.
Because it was, you know, in these, in these core, in the Human Services granting process, it was getting to $10 per resident, but we had a, we had a significant spend that was occurring outside of that as well, which doesn't seem to show up here.
Yeah. So thank you for that. I would be very happy to go back and look. I think these are numbers that, that we found based on just the Human Services Grants that we give out. I am familiar that, like you mentioned, there was a mayoral fund that now, that used to be called, more recently, the community fund, and that was folded into the larger Human Services budget process, but it's funding currently, though. There was allocations to fund them.
The reason I ask about it is, you know, setting aside what you just said for a second, or, you know, I just look at this, and this looks like a healthy growth in this expenditure over the last 10 years. But if in fact, in the last four, five years, you've also folded in what you just said, if that, if the mayoral community granting number is included in this, then in fact, this isn't healthy.
Right. So yes, it's not included in this, what you see on the screen, because what's on the screen, it's only the Human Services Grants that we give out to the city. The fund was folded into the Human Services Division's budget, which includes, in addition to, to the grants, includes staffing and other.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't included.
Yes, no, it's not included in here. Thank you for that clarification.
Because it would present a false comfort, a false sense of comfort.
Yes. No, no, no.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions before I move? Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Monica?
Yes.
So I understand that Susie Moncel is on the call?
Mm-hmm.
If you wanted to get a, a better budget sense from, from the Finance Department?
Sure. Yes.
Just making resources available to you there, Councilmember Martz.
I am, sorry, can you hear me?
Susie, you sound great. Loud.
As I figure out how to turn on my equipment here. Yeah, so the 202 awards for the Human Service Grants are included in the 2022 budget book. They're listed out starting on page 102. I'm happy to share or send whatever is most convenient.
Would you like just to get that sent to you?
I mean, I, I really just wanted to know whether these numbers included that mayoral community grant. And as long as the answer is no, then, I mean, I, I'm very aware of the process that was used to, to generate granting out of the Human Services Commission, and I think that'll be part of what we'll talk about later. But as long as you're not disagreeing, as long as you're not contradicting the idea that these numbers here include the community grant, then I'm not as concerned.
Yes, I am not contradicting that.
All right, let's move on then. Thanks, Susie.
Thank you, as well on my end. Okay, so we talked a little bit about the COVID-19 response and the additional funds for Human Services. Again, thank you for your work and collaboration with us on that. As also mentioned, we expanded some staffing capacity to serve the community needs over the last couple of years during the pandemic as well. And last but not least, as, thank you again, as we just recently adopted the Human Services Strategic Plan, what you see on the screen are the four buckets that the strategic plan priorities identified. And with that, the Human Services Commission will use these priorities and the information in the strategic plan to really guide the grants reviews over the summer and make recommendations to you and Mayor Pauli in the fall. So, taking it all into consideration, the, the many changes and struggles over the last couple of years, and how our city developed and grew over the years, again, just a small repeat, the options that we would love to discuss with you tonight are really, really, we would love to hear more from, what are your goals for the grants? What would be helpful for us to bring back? Would you like us to propose just a one-time change for the 2023-2024 funding cycle, looking to establishing a policy, a more long-term process? Consider something different, make no changes at this time. And I'm gonna pause for questions. Our recommendation, and it doesn't have to be now, it can be later, it can be also next year. It would be perhaps helpful to consider a more longer-term policy, that it would be more proactive, instead of us having to come to you each cycle and wonder what should we do with the funds. Perhaps if we have a policy that establishes either a cost of living adjustment, or a change based on demographics, that might provide, kind of like, maybe take the guesswork out a little bit for the commissioners, for nonprofit agencies. Again, it is just one recommendation, and it's not, yeah, we would love to hear from you more than anything. And before I stop for questions, just wanted to provide you like a brief And before I stop for questions, just wanted to provide you like a brief timeline of what to expect next from us. If we want to continue the conversation, we would hope to do it in May and June, because our hope is that Human Services Commission will spend the summer between June and the end of August in reviewing those grants and make recommendations to Mayor Pauli for early September, so she can include them in the budget process for your review in the fall. And with that, I'm available for questions. I know Jeff is also online, I don't know if I missed anything, Jeff, jump in. Thank you, councilmembers.
Councilmember Martz?
Can you go back to your recommendation slide just for a second? Human services program that will proactively and periodically reevaluate the funding amount. So you're looking for basically a committed and stable and monotonically growing source of revenue, on, on the revenue side for human services. Is that what this, is that what all that language means?
I believe so, it can be interpreted as that.
Okay, so what problem is this trying to solve?
Well, on our end, we wanted to respond to what you asked us to come to, to start a conversation on the human services grants. On, on our end, as city staff, of course, we always want to support our nonprofits. I cannot come to you, I wouldn't be doing my job if I would tell you that I would not want to increase funds for our human services nonprofits. But at the same time, I also understand that there are so many other needs in the city, and I also understand that how can we put a value on human needs? Is it, can we come and say, okay, if you give us $3 million, that's going to be enough? It's, it's going to be hard when you put, you cannot put a value on human services needs. So for that reason, on our end, we want to work with you, we want to hear from you, what's your feedback? You also have the bigger picture perspective, where you know what other needs are at the city, what other funding needs to be spent on other projects, and we'll go from there. We are flexible. We, we are okay if we don't change anything, we are okay if we make a one-time adjustment, we are okay if we look at a policy.
I'm sorry, I'm still wondering what the problem is.
I'm not, I'm not clarifying.
I mean, we, we've had a process, and it, it's worked more or less the same for the 13 years I've been on council.
Right.
And you're proposing doing something different. Why?
Well, I think what, Jeff has his hand up.
Jeff has his hand up.
Okay.
Director Watlin, you want to?
Yeah, Councilmember Martz, thank you, Jeff Watlin, Parks and Community Services Director, thanks so much, Monica. I, I don't know that I would, I would say so much of a problem, Councilmember Martz, I think it's an opportunity that we want to present, that as we look at making human services investments every two-year cycle, now a number of cities around us, a number of agencies around us, try and take a more proactive approach and have some type of multiplier or some type of, of funding formula that allows for a little bit more level of planning as the Human Services Staff and Human Services Commission are preparing application cycles, often the application cycle, just like this year, is happening before the budget process. So I wouldn't say it's a problem, we can make it work, as Monica says. I, I think we're just presenting this as a, as a discussion, and Monica, you can see the feedback, and see this more as an opportunity.
Councilmember Martz?
I, I'm sorry, but I hear, I hear a problem buried in that. It sounds like you're saying there's an issue with the human services granting process occurring before the budget, and a concern that the work that the Human Services Commission does will then not get reflected in the budget? Is, is that the concern, and has that been a problem in the past?
And Councilmember Martz, members of the council, let me take another stab at this. This originally came off, the reason it is here tonight in part, is because the council talked about this at your planning retreat in January. And so as we reviewed the notes from that, from that planning retreat, I think as Monica and Jeff have both said, I think we, we reflected on that and said, yeah, there, there's an issue here that we would agree needs to be talked about. I think we heard from several councilmembers saying we aren't doing enough, that we need to identify additional dollars. The challenge with identifying additional dollars is, there's a chicken and egg with the budget. Should we have those dollars identified now so that the Human Services Commission can go through their process knowing there's additional dollars? Or are additional dollars allocated after the Human Services Commission's already done their work? But we're here in April to raise the issue. As Monica demonstrated, from what we're getting in requests, that exceeds the amount. And when you look at what we put in to additional services during the pandemic, you know, those needs also continue. So we're really here in response, in part, to the council saying, you know, perhaps there's an opportunity to make some adjustments here. We're coming now to you because we would rather have the council make those decisions before the budget and before the Human Services Commission does its work, rather than have this discussion in November when the budget's already out and the Human Services Commission is not at work. So hopefully that's a better answer, Councilmember Martz, to your question.
That is a very illuminating answer to my question, thank you. I have all sorts of thoughts that I'm going to hold off because I can't phrase them in the form of a question.
Any, any other questions? I know that there's a, a ground swelling of comment that's bubbling around the table, but before we get to that, I just want to make sure we have any more questions for Monica, or then we'll move on to, to the discussion phase. Any, any questions, clarifications? That looks like a no. Oh, Deputy Counsel President Hall.
Thank you, I was kind of going back and forth on whether or not to ask this. So this is certainly a high-level preliminary discussion about, you know, what direction the council wants to go. I'm interested, there's a question in here, but there, there's a few sentences left, so hold on. I'm interested in where the Human Services Commission's head at, head is at. So we have this kind of open question about, there are, there's this much requests that come in, and then this is the bucket that we have to fund. And now we have the Human Services, Human Services Strategic Plan that says, these are all the needs, these are the gaps and the needs that we want to focus on. So I'm curious if the Human Services Commission has kind of had a discussion about that in, in terms of, is there anything that the Human Services Commission has discussed between those differences that would help inform our conversation about new human services grant program policy?
Thank you so much, Deputy Counsel President Hall, for that question. We did have some conversation with the Human Services Commission. I do want to make the note, though, that we are inboarding four new Human Services Commissioners, which is more than half of the Commission, just starting May 1st, so that always plays a role into, into that. But we did have in the previous months some conversations, and especially those who have been on, on the board for a little bit longer. I remember even our, one of the members commenting and saying, you know, we are a volunteer board, we learn about these nonprofits, and, and we want to help them, and they really have a really, really hard time when they get, like last time, we had 91 applications, and they review them all, and all of them do great, great work, and they know that the funding is not enough, and rightfully so, they always tried to, let's give a little bit, but let's give to as many as agencies as we can. So rightfully so, I think while they see that the strategic plan is going to be helpful, and it's going to limit a little bit more, still, the Human Service Strategic Plan is still huge, even with those four buckets, there are so many sub-buckets within that, it's still going to be very, very difficult. So I'm sorry, I'm not quite answering perhaps your question fully, but another idea that was brought up was that perhaps, you know, for example, about 40% of the funds typically go to fund some sort of services that have to do with homelessness. So one thought that was brought up at some point was, what if we take out of the Human Services Grants all the services that relate to homelessness, and the Commission just focuses on the smaller grants that are perhaps more fun, and, because they have a hard time, how are they going to choose between, are we going to support homelessness or cultural-related services, which are all, again, so, so fundamentally important, right? So some of those conversations that we had, and just, yeah, they, it, it's not easy for the Commission to have those conversations.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'll go and we'll do public comment. Anybody in the audience liked, like to make public, no, Julian? City Clerk, anybody online raising their virtual hand?
Councilmember Ray, I see no virtual hands raised at this time.
All right. Let's, let's move on to discussion and direction. Any, anybody like to get us going? Councilmember Martz, then De Michelle.
So, so the federal government spends roughly $4,300 per person on human services. The state of Washington spends about 130, and King County spends almost as much as the feds, $2,800 per person. So in that, our ability to fundamentally drive human services is miniscule, right? Where we can make a difference is at the margins. So what I have always liked about the Human Services Commission is they go out and figure out where those margins are, right? What's missing? And where, between the feds, and the state, and the county, what's falling through the cracks, and where can we make a difference? And it's a really unique charge, right? It's unlike most of what we do. Like our roads, it's, it's a big thing, right? Our public, safety is a big thing, right? This is, this is in between these huge players and vast amounts of dollars that are going around at those other three levels, right? So I think that role is very, very important. I am concerned about, I, I feel like when we talked about it in January, we talked about it more on, I, I was thinking more on the demand side and understanding the demand more. The, the small L libertarian in me worries about just specifying a pot of dollars, and we'll, I mean, we'll fill those dollars, but in a perfect world, what I'd rather see is see the Human Services Commission say, what, you know, what, what do we really think is essential? What do we think are things that would impact quality of life in Issaquah if we did not give this money? I'm very familiar with some organizations will ask for a lot of money, right? Village Theater would gladly take $10 million a year from us if they could get it, and they would make an argument about why that would be a good investment, and we can't spend that money, right? And so having, I, you know, I would go back, personally, I would stress it more on the, of this much larger than, you know, we, we have had a standard of $10 per person now for five or six years, whether it's written up in the budget or not, it's, it's, it's been, it's been there for a while. You know, what you're saying is that that comes nowhere near what, what's being asked of us, but what I really want to know is what's needed, right? And I think if we know what's needed, if it's not $10 per person, if it's really more like 15, if it's, you know, that we know that the county can only do certain things, if there's things that the county is falling down on such that we need to have a different fundamental model, I'm not opposed to that, but I'm, I'm nervous about just specifying a number, right? Going up to the board and writing $15, right? Hooray! We, you know, well, that doesn't, that doesn't get at what's the need, so, you know, I, I, I absolutely think it's a good idea for us to look fundamentally at human services and where we can make a difference and where we can move the needle. But I, I would be more inclined to, you know, if we want to have a floor for this year, some number, you know, 10 or 12 dollars per resident or whatever it is, but really have a process, you know, I was, I was touched, I don't know, you probably didn't know this, but my daughter was on the Human Services Commission as the Youth Advisory Board representative, and every year, every two years, she brought home this giant immensely thick, you know, binder, and she was really honored that the Human Services Commission looked so closely at where the city can be of assistance, and I want us to keep doing that. And I want us to perhaps give the Human Services Commission a broader mandate to try to help us understand where we're, where we're missing, and where it's an example, not just of organizations that would love to have our money, but organizations that aren't going to be able to do their jobs if they don't get money from us. Sorry for such a long-winded monologue, thank you.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank Monica for asking us the question. What, what are the goals for the Human Server Grant Program? I think it's a great question, and you kept my mind busy for the last couple of days. So I want to start there, you know, with what, what do I think about the goals? And so I'm going to start with some general principles that came to my mind. First of all, I'd like to see as much of our resources as possible support agencies located and providing services here within our community, easily within reach of our residents, because we know that transportation is one of the main barriers, be keeping people from accessing services. So, and, so I know, Councilmember Martz, I, I do not want to counter a lot of what you said, but I, I do need to say that it's hard for us to know what the need is, because there are a lot of barriers to people even accessing services, and that's one of the issues that we really have to, have to think about, and how can we make the services that people are eligible for, and that they should be able to access, and that they're not able to access because they're not available here, because people have to get on a bus or take a car that they don't have somewhere else? Those are issues that they may not know about it, education's another piece. So as much as possible, and I know it's not possible to keep all of the money locally, but as much as possible to focus on agencies that are here and locating and providing services here. The second thing I'd like us to think about, and I'm going to mangle this paraphrase terribly, but when Gary Locke was executive of King County, and we were in the middle of the recession, and he asked a question, and I know I'm not going to repeat it correctly, but basically he said, are we going to have 100 programs that are barely functioning, or are we going to have 10 programs delivering excellent service? And so when we talk about increasing the amount, what I'd like us to look at is, on that slide that you had earlier, the average grant was 8,400? What I'd like to see is that average grant amount go up to an amount, $8,400, what is that, a month and a half, you know, of operating costs or less than, I mean, let's push that up to a level that would actually make an impact, whether it's at the Food and Clothing Bank, or Issaquah Community Services, or whatever. I think we should be looking at that as a metric for the success of our, of our human services grants. And then again, as Councilmember Martz said, the Human Services Commission, and I know they do such a thoughtful job, so I'm not suggesting that they're not doing it, but I would really like them to identify the agencies and the programs where we can make deeper investments that would yield stronger or more strategic results. So then, to be very specific about the goals, I think the goals are going to change over time, because we are coming out of a pandemic, and so we haven't even started the recovery process yet, we're not even really done with the pandemic yet. So I think we, first of all, again, have to meet the basic needs. I think we can't give up on just housing, food, clothing, you know, basic needs. And then secondly, we've got to start to address and help people recover. I like the word heal better, from the trauma of the past two and a half years. So we have to focus on mental health, behavioral health, and I think those would be my two top goals. So the healthy, it was mentioned earlier, the school district has published the Healthy Youth Results for the school district, and this is just one example again, is there need in our community? Absolutely, there's need in our community. Healthy Youth Survey Results from the Issaquah School District, 37% of seniors in the Issaquah School District report feeling of depression, compared to 30% in 2018, the last time the test was taken, that's a 23% increase. 20% of juniors and 19% of seniors say that they have contemplated suicide, compared to 17% in 2018, that's an 18% increase. This is consistent all across the United States, isolation, you know, disruption, life stories, completely changed and altered, suddenly turmoil, all of those things. And those are young people, but we know that our seniors were affected by, very adversely by, by the pandemic, and then we know about job losses and, and career changes and so many different things. So we need to be really thoughtful about how we address the trauma of the last two and a half years. Then I would very much support instituting a form- Um, then I would very much support instituting a formula that would have the city review and adjust, uh, human services grant funding. Um, my answer to that question, what problem are we trying to solve? I would go at it from the point of view of social service agencies. So right now, social service agencies are, uh, putting together their applications for their human services grants. I believe they're due on Thursday. Thursday, correct? So they're doing it now. And they look at each city. What is the Bellevue offering? What is Issaquah offering? What is Siamish offering? And they tailor their grant application to the amount of money that's available. So then they submit their grant, and, uh, those grants are awarded later, I believe, before we actually adopt the budget. But, no, okay, after we adopt the budget. So unless the Human Services Commission wants to give more money than an agency asks for, there's really no place in there to increase the available funds. So we need a process that allows us to get that timing issue under control so that agencies will know for sure that they can apply for more money. Right now, they're going to apply for the bucket that's five hundred thousand dollars. And that's all that's, that's going to be available, period, uh, to our agency. So, so that's the reason I think that, uh, that timing issue is something that we've got to deal with on a more stable, uh, platform. Uh, okay, and so then the last. So how much should we increase the amount of money in the Human Services Grants Fund? So in nonprofit world, we say that, uh, we ask people for a stretch goal when, uh, we ask for money. So I'm going to be bold and I'm going to say, I, I'd love to see that budget doubled. Let's go for a million dollars. And can we make that effective? You bet we can make that effective. Are there needs out there? You bet there are needs out there. And we're coming off of two and a half years of, of a pandemic with tremendous behavioral health impacts. And I have no doubt that that million dollars would be spent effectively, um, and strategically. And I know the Human Services Commission would do a great job of allocating it. So I'm not afraid to say a certain amount of money. And I want us to think about being generous to the people of our community who have really been hurt by the last two and a half years. I'm done.
Council President Walsh.
Thank you. Um, Monica, again, thank you for starting with the question. I think that's really important for us to recognize is we're coming at this and saying, well, what do we want? How do we want to get there? What's our process? Um, I think through what I've heard earlier, we can recognize there's maybe a few problems with the process. One is potentially this timing issue. I think I also agree with Councilmember De Michelle that our average grant size is probably a little bit low and not able to be as effective. And whether we get to that by increasing the overall dollar amount and still funding the same number, but at a higher rate, or whether we say, hey, we just created a strategic plan. We've said, these are the gaps that we're going to focus on. And we just really highlight through those in order to increase the value, um, of those individual grants. I think that's really important. I think the other thing, when I look at the annual dollar amounts, it honestly seems a little bit fickle whether there was an increase between one year or not. Um, when I calculated out, some of the years, there was zero increase. Some of the years, the increase was thirty-three percent. I can't track that down to whether we had high general fund levels, whether we had a really persuasive staff member, whether there was an interesting way to say there's this heavy need, whether it was based on staff availability. And so when I see that increase and decrease, to me, it doesn't seem based on a policy decision or based on necessarily need or a strategic goal. And so my preference would be to have a policy. I like something that's formulaic, that is based on cost of living or population or something like that. I know in previous budget periods, we've been asked by someone in the nonprofit arena to commit to something like two percent of our budget toward that. And so I'd like to understand what that idea is a metric, what other cities are doing that we might use, uh, for our idea of those potential stretch goals. And maybe it doesn't work necessarily for this cycle because of that timing issue, but it gives us an idea of how to be strategic about it in the future and kind of move toward an arena that lets us match up with the strategic plan that you guys have created so that we can be strategic about our funding as well. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember.
Thank you. Uh, well, I, my initial thought was to look at the Human Services Plan that we recently adopted because I like our policy discussions to be consistent with our adopted plans. So in that plan, there is, um, some indication about different areas where we would spend different money. And there are specific callouts to where that money would be in human services, uh, human services grants within that plan. And I just, you know, quickly, there's a, the way that the costs were estimated in that was using these dollar signs, and one dollar sign was up to fifty thousand, two dollar signs is fifty to two hundred thousand, et cetera. So they were rough estimates. But it does look like in the plan, the five hundred thousand dollars is about what's in the plan. It's within the range of what you would get with those dollar signs. Um, so that, that said, I think that it would be, um, it would be, I think, best practice to look at what other cities that use a formula are doing. Because as, um, Council President Walsh pointed out, some years, we haven't done the increase and some years, we have. I think something more based on population size and then, um, potentially also something like, um, Consumer Price Index, something about the value of purchasing, value of money should also be factored in because ten dollars per person and, um, you know, twenty years ago would be different than ten dollars per person right now, to use an extreme example. But in any event, I think that should be changing a bit with, at least with population and with the buying power of that money. Um, and potentially other cities have determined other things, maybe AMI or other, um, metrics to look at. You know, not only the number of people in the city, but also the number of people that, um, would be requiring these services at a very, you know, coarse estimate level. Um, so I, I share the concerns about the, the effect of the last two years. I think we've seen, you know, later this evening, we have a presentation about, um, the, from the, um, economic standpoint, the, it says something about the area average income increasing. But that isn't to say that the distribution hasn't, um, also changed such that the people who, um, are lower income aren't, um, that much more, uh, cost burdens in a number of ways. And there are a number of, um, seems there's a number of impacts that we have yet to fully understand from the last two years. So, um, I would like to see, you know, some other cities' examples of what they do as far as using that demographic information, but from where, but my initial thought is that this should be at least based on things like, uh, the population increase. And there should be a system for using that to increase at a regular interval. So it's a known time when we update it, using that, and then also, um, buying power of that money.
Thank you. Um, Deputy Council President Hall.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. Um, I would love to just, I would love to say I want to double it. I would love to just say, let's go with a million dollars. Um, uh, but two things come to mind for me, first and foremost, and it's already been kind of referenced now is, you know, we have our, we have our North Star now, which is the Human Services Strategic Plan that define the different, the different types of gaps and services that we really want to go after, that aren't being addressed. Um, and then also, you know, as, as you mentioned, Monica, too, um, and as we all know, there are many, many competing priorities. We just went through a many-month-long process about the state of our, um, infrastructure funding priorities here in the city, too, and what needs to be done to, um, modernize and, dare I say, revolutionize infrastructure in Issaquah. Um, so I think that there's a policy discussion to be had here. Um, I think, like I said, my preference would be that the Human Services Strategic Plan, and it really is our North Star there, um, and we use those metrics, you know, we still haven't, you know, we have metrics that we spent, that you spent a lot of time um, finding, you know, really good metrics that are going to help guide decisions into the future, too. So I think it would be better to, um, wait for the results of those metrics to start coming through, to then paint the picture about what we need to be doing next cycle. Um, but in the meantime, I think that this, um, proactive, periodical reevaluation is an interesting idea worth exploring. Um, I liked the idea about studying how other cities are approaching that. Um, I think it might, their own reevaluations, I think it might be worth also approaching our service provider partners, too, and saying, what are the criteria? What are the factors that you think would be, that we should be looking at, too, that we might overlook since they're, you know, boots on the ground, in the weeds? They know exactly what the kinds of factors that influence how they can do their work. Um, especially, um, our service provider partners that are, you know, in line with the goals that we want to do in the Human Services Strategic Plan, uh, in those four buckets. Yeah, those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Councilmember Joe, did you have any comments you'd like to share?
Well, I think that, um, one of the questions that we're looking at in terms of chicken and egg is if we go to a two-year budget cycle, we're going to want the human services to be on that same cycle. And if we do go to a two-year budget, human services will have to be, uh, a little bit more strategic in their forward-looking, uh, you know, and try to plan a little bit better. So the questions that are in front of us are, are important tonight because if we do adopt that budget, we're going to have to, we're going to have to face those questions. Um, the human services, uh, organizations that we deal with will have to make an adjustment when they see that we're on a two-year plan as well, and they'll have to be more strategic along the way. So, um, what I think we should do is, I, I am in favor of increasing the amount that goes to human services, but I need to know some of the trade-offs. I need to know if we do increase it to a million dollars, like my colleague wants to do, what, what, what do we lose? You know, are we going to lose some of the, the gains that we're trying to find with, uh, climate action? Are we going to lose, uh, some other services in terms of, um, festivals or flowers on Front Street or whatever it might be? I just need to kind of know that context before I can make a decision. In terms of, um, the policy that we're thinking about doing, um, I do think that depends on whether or not we do a one-year budget or a two-year budget, and that decision will kind of determine whether or not we're going to be making a change or not. And I don't want it to necessarily drive the full conversation, but that's one of the, the factors that I would like to get settled before we make a change to the human services policy. I think that policy, um, is important for us to, to hammer out in committee. Um, and, um, so that the human service organizations that we deal with know what we're striving for, know what we're trying to achieve, and are clear in terms of, um, the, the types of programs that they can propose that will have a good shot at getting approved. From my point of view, it, human services, um, as Councilmember Martz points out, human services, it, at, at our level is always at the margin. What can we do that's going to really make a difference to those next five people that might not have been getting service? Or what's going to make a difference for the kid that thinks that things are hopeless in school because of X, Y, or Z? But because we have an after-school program that we're starting, it gives them, you know, new life or whatever. And so with that in mind, in terms of the, the margins, um, I think it's real important that we, um, make sure that the money that we are going to select is going to be that marginal money that, that can really make that difference. And that gets back to the, the feedback that we can get from the Human Services Commission as well. So I don't think we have a clear answer tonight in terms of what we want to do. I, I see a lot of opportunities for interaction, collaboration, and, uh, discussion. Uh, and I've liked the conversation tonight, but those are my initial thoughts.
Council, Councilmember Martz, can I, uh, can I do round one first and then I'll come back to you for round two? Thank you. I have a, I have a couple of thoughts, and they're, they're a bit all over the map, so please bear with me. Um, first is, I think that regardless of how much money we were to spend, we would always have needs far in excess of whatever we were to budget. So, so we're not going to ever fill this need, um, and that's unfortunate. In twenty seventeen, we pegged the Human Services Grants to ten dollars per, per resident. That was the year, uh, the year of it. And, um, and, and then it's kind of been all over the map since then. Um, I wouldn't be opposed at all to pegging the Human Services Budget to a multiplier of population plus a CPI, um, escalator, and then maybe some other proxy for need. I don't know what that would be, but something where we could say, look, this particular segment of the population is increasing, so it should drive an increase. This particular population is, is not, so maybe it drives a decrease. But something that, that, that helps us tie, uh, funding, uh, formulaically to need because, um, because, because these are hard conversations to have, and having a formula to, to set a baseline helps. Um, I'd also be really open and interested in pursuing a regional approach to some of our human services programs, instead of a Issaquah Plan and a Siamish Plan and a Redmond Plan, but take something a little more like an arch plan or an arch approach where we try to pool our, our money. Because one of the things that Councilmember De Michelle quoted Gary Locke on, I, I was going to give you credit for it, but I'll, I won't. Um, but no, I think it's right on, is let, let's focus on doing some things really well. And sometimes the best way to do that is to do them as a collaborative. Um, and then the, the corollary to that is a comparison to other cities. What are, what are other cities around here doing? And then, um, but my real point, that the only one I really wanted to make through all that ramble, is what are the things that we are uniquely, um, good at? What's our value proposition as a city as a compared to other entities? And, and we have to answer that question. What makes us unique as a city? And so what should we do to leverage those things that we are very uniquely positioned to do? If the county can do it, we shouldn't be, you know, we shouldn't be taking the lead. You know, if the state's doing it, we shouldn't be taking the lead. If it's something we can fill the gap, we should be taking the lead. And, you know, was it two years ago? I remember we had this large discussion about rent assistance. And we, we had, we were uniquely positioned to move quickly to fill that void of rental assistance. And we did, and that was like, yeah, that's what we should be doing. So that's, that's what I'm trying to think about is how do we, what are we, what are we best at? And then let's go do that. So, um, with that, Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. So yeah, some, some follow-on thoughts. Absolutely plus-one on anchoring back to the plan and going back to, uh, looking at, uh, both the goals and the metrics that we've set up around human services and the strategic plan. Um, you know, for comparison's sake, just last fall, the voters, um, funded a new Best Starts for Kids. It's a hundred dollars per person in the county. Just again, to point out how much, you know, there are other Titanic forces at work in the county and in the state and in the nation, uh, against which we are small potatoes, which is not to say we shouldn't do something. Um, you know, I'll point out two things around this, figuring out what to do. One is, I loved when the Human Services Commission, there was a point where they had this beautiful graph. You know, I like graphs. So on the one axis, it was crisis versus, um, at one end versus preventative services at the other. And then on the other axis, it had, uh, point of life. So it had neo, uh, prenatal and neonatal all the way up through end, end of life. And it sort of mapped out where some of the needs were to make sure that parts were being covered. But as, as I hear this conversation tonight, I mean, I love the boldness of saying, let's just double it. But, uh, but, but I would like to suggest, and maybe instead of doing that, we think about coming up with something that's, um, at or above where we're at right now, but setting aside some money, and I, you know, Chris, how much I hate, uh, spending money on consultants. But this seems like the kind of situation where hiring a consultant to come in and work, uh, with our sustainability group and with the Human Services Commission might be really valuable. So on the order of a hundred thousand dollars is pretty much what those folks seem to cost. Uh, you know, something like that, instead of just doubling, right? And if they come back and they say, we need twenty dollars per person to do the kind of things that, to close things out, then I would be very supportive of doing that. But I want to, I want to have somebody look at it first. And, and I think it's more than, as much as I love the Human Services Commission, it's probably more than, than you can ask just to them, for them to do it directly. So this is another thought, is, uh, you know, have somebody help us out with this and figure out where the margins are and where we can really, where we need to move the needle because it's just, the feds aren't doing it and the state's not doing it and the county's not doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember De Michelle.
So I, I just want to add some, just some generic remarks, but, um, pert- uh, pertain- So I just want to add some, just some generic remarks, but pertaining to what's been said. You know, I've been involved since I got on the council with the Eastside Human Services Forum, and we've been having some really excellent discussions lately. And I'm sure you've heard this comment before, but I think it's worth repeating. The Eastside is perceived as affluent, mostly white, and not needing social services. And so one of the most important things that we can do as Issaquah, but also with our fellow cities, with Redmond, Kirkland, and Bellevue, is to start myth-busting and showing them exactly what the needs are on the Eastside, and those needs are growing. And we have to be advocates for the folks who are in our community that need services because in a lot of people's minds, and a lot of people who make the decisions, like Best Starts for Kids is one of the things that I most get concerned about. We pay into that, and we get very, very little back because, again, we are perceived as not having needs, but we do have needs. And so as a group, we have to get together with our fellow council members across the Eastside, work together, advocate, and make sure that we get our fair share of regional, state, and federal funding, because we're not getting it now. And that's where some of the gaps come in, and where we're trying to fill these big gaps, but we don't have the resources, and they're not coming from other places. And so we have this huge gap between that $500,000 and that 1.38 in a million in needs. So just a reminder of where we are in the bigger picture of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other round-two comments? Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I think I kind of said this a little bit, and you've heard from other councilmembers, but just to reiterate, because it's so important, you know, some of the things we've heard tonight, too, are that compared to the entirety of human services spending across the continuum of governments, you know, we're here. And we have, like I said earlier, we have lots of needs in the city. The Human Services Strategic Plan helps describe our needs in human services. Like was mentioned, the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. I just want to make sure we don't forget that the world is melting, too. So like, there are lots of things that, you know, like, we can't, how am I trying to say this? We have a small impact on the things that we want to have an impact on in human services because we also have to have a small impact on the things that we can have an impact with regard to climate change and with regard to our Mobility Master Plan, because we need to start getting people out of their cars more often, and in walking, and in multimodal, and our other plans that describe how we want to be the city of the future that cares for our residents. So just another layer of context on this that, again, you know, all of us, if we had a magic wand, would give lots of money to our human services needs here in Issaquah, across the region, everywhere, but just also some broader context that there are other issues that require our attention that we need to be strategic on as well, too, and in partnerships with the region, like was said, too. So anyways, I just wanted to make sure that didn't, I said that. So thank you again, Monica.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Director, one thing that I hope you take from the conversation is that we really, I really appreciate the work that you do when we have a blizzard, when we have these situations where human services are impacting ways that we might not have imagined. And your personnel do an outstanding job because you're in touch with the community. You're in touch with our police. You're in touch with the other organizations that are out there, and you can immediately have an impact on someone's life and get them out of the cold and into a shelter. What I'm trying to say is, please don't take this conversation as any kind of stamp that says, we don't like the innovation that you're doing. We love the innovation that you're doing. We love the ideas that you're bringing to us to push us to decide whether or not we want to increase the funding. Please continue to bring those ideas to us, and just out of, from where I sit, if you were to come to us and say, hey, we need $50,000 to do X, and it's going to have this impact, and we know it's going to have this impact because we've worked with this population, I think this council would be very open to giving it full consideration. So I hope that the message you're receiving from us is thank you, and we really appreciate you pushing us on this, and don't take my comments as kind of, you know, saying, don't innovate, don't think of new things, because that's not the message that we, that I want to send this evening. So thank you for everything you do.
Okay. All right, Monica, thank you. That was great, as always. Did you get what you needed from us? Because we gave you lots.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ray, and councilmembers. Very much appreciating the feedback. I think I took notes for everything. I believe that if there's a consensus, so I heard a lot of feedback on multiple sites. And I would like to summarize, I'm not sure if there's a consensus consensus, and that's okay. But I think in terms of next steps, my understanding is that perhaps we'll go back, we will provide additional information on what other cities are doing. We would like to work together, maybe perhaps long-term, for the next funding cycle, to come up with a policy, but perhaps at this point, we should just plan to work with the Human Services Commission to use the funding that we have for this coming cycle for the fall. I know that there, yes, so, no, that I know. We can just also just come back to the next committee meeting, so I would love just a little bit of consensus of what's the next step for us.
Let me do a little summarizing. I don't think there was a consensus, that's probably why you didn't hear one. There were a lot of ideas, there were some emerging themes around, you know, doing more, focusing on the strategic plan, maybe being formula-driven, being bold, counterbalancing being bold when we have other demands on the city's resources, possibly regional perspectives, doing a few things really well instead of a lot of things, not moving the needle, doing things that we're good at. And I will certainly give everyone else a chance to talk, but what I'd like to see is for you and your team to take this away and come back with, here's what we think we should do, and with all the information that you just, just, because we were really, it was a, it was very varied input that we gave you, and come back with something and then bring it to services? Services, safeties, and parks?
Sounds good, we'll do that.
All right.
Thank you, and I don't know.
Oh, is it Jeff?
I see City Administrator Bobkowitz, this is Jeff Watling as well. Thank you for that, Councilmember Ray. I was going to suggest the same thing, that I, the discussion was very helpful, this is a great chance for us to, I guess, to get the feedback. We now have the opportunity to come to services, parks, I'm not going to get the committee name right, forgive me, but we'll come back to that committee with some follow-up discussion, not only for the '23, '24 funding cycle, but even looking farther ahead. So we'll come back to committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Watling. All right, I'm going to give everyone one last shot at this one, because it's a big one. All right. That was a short shot. So we're going to move on. Our last agenda item for tonight is, thanks, Monica, is ID 1059, First Quarter Reports, Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Report, and First Quarter 2022 Report, Work Plan, Capital Projects, Performance Measures, Citywide Staffing and Economic Development. City Administrator Bobkowitz is presenting, along with Management Analyst Dale Marky-Crimp. So City Administrator, are you going to take the lead on this one?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilmember Ray, members of the council. What we've done is prepared a series of reports, which are on the, in the agenda packet. We're happy to answer questions. We have no real specific presentation, except I asked Dale Marky-Crimp to join us tonight and share a little bit of her handiwork regarding performance measures and the dashboard that we've been working on. So perhaps, Councilmember Ray, we could entertain if there's any questions about any of the reports that are in the packet first, and then we can conclude with Dale walking through the performance measures.
All right, we'll do that. Council President Walsh has a question or a comment.
I have questions on all of the reports, so maybe I should ask first, do you want me to go through my slew of questions, or do you want to take it section by section? Because I broke mine out into things that were about the budget, things that were about the work plan, et cetera.
I think that's up to the council. Perhaps it would be easier just to go through report by report and just do a round robin from the council on each of the reports.
All right, let's do that. So first quarter of 2022, first quarter budget update?
Okay. So am I able to make comments along with questions on this one?
Only because the hour is late, yes.
Fantastic. So on the Q1 budget, I really appreciate the, we've pointed out that the 2022 amended budget brings our undesignated fund balance down from 44% to 25%. However, I have a lot of heartburn about that because it took us until 2022 to make those adjustments. Well, all of that is because of underspending that happened in 2021. So what I'd like to know from the administration is, this has been an ongoing thing every year, every year. What are we doing now that we're in Q1 of 2022 so that we're not facing this situation again in Q1 of 2023? Do we have the ability to have kind of a mid-year plan to look at our staffing levels and potentially reallocate the money elsewhere if we aren't able to spend what we've budgeted?
Let me take Council President Walsh a quick hit on that question, and then if Robert, our chief financial officer, wishes to add to it. The underspend at the end of last year was significant. The number of individuals who separated from the city, mostly because of the COVID vaccination requirement, was significant. We, I think, were not really able to ascertain what those numbers would be when we were with the council last in October, giving an update. With that said, our human resources staff is working with each of the operating departments very diligently to fill those positions. We're having, I think, more success than we planned, and so those positions are being filled rather quickly. In addition to that, I think the council's familiar with the issues we had with the police department, which were separate from the vaccination. We've also, I think, made a lot of efforts there. The administration is very aware of the council's concern over fund balance issues. Again, I think we look at the issues at the end of last year with both the police department and the separation issues of the vaccination requirement as hopefully one-time issues. I think we have pretty good handle on where we're at now, and when we come to the council with the mid-year report, we plan to use the July 16 council retreat as the opportunity to dive into, not only mid-year, but first discussions for '23, '24. I think we feel pretty confident with that. Robert, do you want to add anything to that answer?
Yes, thank you, Ollie. Council President Walsh, so what we're looking at as well is, and the narrative is included in the part of the report, is there was obviously the underspend last year coupled with revenue ticking up at the end of the year. Revenue picture that's presented right now with the budget, with the amended budget on the expenditure side, the revenue picture, we haven't updated. We're aiming for April, or we're actually aiming for August to present to the council an updated revenue forecast. There's a lot of uncertainty this year going into next year, but we're actually, Susan and I are working on building a long-term forecast that will also show each year over estimating expenditures and revenues to be going forward. So that, those numbers are preliminary, they're subject to change, of course, as we go through the budget process. But we're monitoring that, and of course, during the budget process, there's going to be options for, you know, spending in different scenarios that we will present to council.
So I hear that, and I hear confidence, and I hear we've made a lot of hiring and all of that. I also see our Q1 actuals show many of the departments have spent less than one-fourth of their annual budget. And so again, I would ask, do we have a mid-year plan for anything that we have underspent because of staffing issues, or because contracts have changed, or whatever that is, to make an adjustment mid-year rather than waiting until we experience this again in 2023?
Yes, and we'll come to the council on July 16 with that discussion.
Great. My second question there, we're still at 25%. So what is our plan for our undesignated fund balance being higher than our 15% to 20% policy? What are we going to do to fix that situation? Not as far as a policy to make sure it doesn't happen again, but what bucket of money do we have to spend, and what can we spend it on?
Mayor Polly will be coming before the council, likely at the beginning of June, with her proposal, her very specific proposals dealing with the American Recovery Act dollars, investments responding to the Capital Financing Task Force, and we anticipate putting forward a proposal that will include fund balance. So that will be part of discussion early June.
So you're suggesting that in a, the ARPA funds aren't in our undesignated fund balance, but you're saying that in addition to the ARPA funds, you're looking to potentially take some of the unspent, undesignedated fund balance and adding it into that proposal?
That's correct.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Councilmember DeMichele, did you have a, okay.
I was reading something.
Okay, great. Do that more often. Just kidding. All right, let's move on to the next one, which is the city work plan. Councilmember Hunt?
I have a question on a specific item. The implementation, implements and enhances the housing strategy work plan is one of our items. It's one of the few, I'm happy to say, that are categorized as major challenges in the red on our report. And it says that the city received a $100,000 state grant for consultants to support this work, and deliverables are expected in June 2023. So I guess my question is, are we expecting this state grant to get us back onto a new track, but, you know, back onto track? Or does this major challenges include other things that won't be possible to be addressed by this state grant, and in which case, what are, what's the plan for getting this very important housing strategy work plan back onto some sort of track?
Councilmember Hunt, members of the council, we think that the grant will be a substantial part of that. You will hear from Mayor Polly next week at the city council meeting with her transmitting the housing report card, which is a part of that plan. She has additional thoughts that she would like to share with the council. I don't believe that she is satisfied with the progress that we're making. I don't want to steal her thunder too much, but there will be additional discussion at the council meeting next week.
Okay, thank you.
Council President Walsh?
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say thank you for adding the start and end dates. That makes it a lot easier to understand the city work plan. What I realized when looking at that is that for all of our goal areas, we've got kind of two components. One is the specific objectives that we've asked for, and then the other one, we call other critical services and timely opportunities. And when I'm looking at it, I notice that the majority of our objectives all have kind of ongoing end dates, while the timely opportunities section really seem to have set timelines. And so I would ask the administration to take a look at this. The lack of end dates always makes, you know, when I look at my personal work, it always makes it easier for that work to creep and for other urgent tasks to take over these that we've set as our designated priorities. So I just ask the administration to take a look at that and make sure that some of those that we've set as our priorities potentially have an end date or have a those that we've set as our priorities potentially have an end date, or have a target date when we have something to deliver, so that it's not just a continuum.
All right, any other comments on the city work plan? And let's move on to the capital projects report. Any comments on capital projects, comments or questions on capital projects report? Council President Walsh, you don't even have to go all the way up there with that.
I'll just do it. So when I'm looking at this and trying to evaluate, you know, are we on target? I see that in some cases, like the tasks for a piece of project that's supposed to last all year, the task is listed in kind of a particular quarter. And so I'm trying to understand that and see whether that means that's when the work is planned to occur. And if that's the case, then is nothing happening in the blank sections? Is something else happening? So I'm just, I'm trying to understand with the capital projects, how do we understand if we're on target and if the segments of work are happening? And then toward that idea, it shows that we're into Q2, but there's nothing to say whether the things that were set out, I assume, as Q1 have been accomplished. So I just ask if there's a way, other than just the color coding in the left column, to maybe put check marks or something else that says, did we or didn't we do what we said we were going to do? That's it.
Were you looking for an answer, or that was just a comment? All right, then let's move to performance measure report. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I just had a question for Wally. Looking at the Newport Way land slide repair, I see that you're going to do the design and bid preparation here in the first quarter. But I noticed the construction wasn't until September or October, and that's, I'd like to kind of know a little bit more about the timing of that. My concern is that we might be doing the construction during the rainy season in an area that was landslide prone. So if you could give a little more color to that, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly, I'm going to phone a friend, Andrea Snyder, the Deputy City Administrator, who's been working with our public work staff. Andrea, can you provide some additional information?
Yes, hi, good evening, this is Andrea Snyder. We are currently working with our consultants to ensure that the design is adequate and meets the, meets the slope to mitigate any future movement. And so we hope to get permitting and soon. We also need some permission from King County. So the few things that we're working through to be able to implement the project, absolutely we understand, we want this project done before the rains start. Working very hard on making sure that that happens, but there are actually things that we need to accomplish before then. So we are going to get it done as soon as we possibly can, and we want that to be before the rains start.
Great.
Right now, we have it projected to finish the project in the fall before we have heavy rains begin.
Great, I appreciate that update, and appreciate your diligence on that project.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Chair Ray, are we taking comments at this as we go?
Yeah, we're kind of doing a hybrid approach to this last section.
Okay. So I had a comment on the Hillside Park improvements. Every time we get the work plan, I look for that project because it's a project that's important to this particular neighborhood where there really aren't neighborhood parks that are walkable without going down and back up a really steep hill for this neighborhood. And kids have grown up and left the community while this park has experienced delays in its planning. So I always check for it. It's still in this yellow minor challenges, which it's been for a while. I had followed up by email in advance of this meeting. It's experiencing the same challenges that it was last time we saw this report. I just wanted to express every time we see this, that this is a really important project for that particular neighborhood. There's not other parks serving those residents. And unlike lots of the city where there's lots of walkable neighborhood parks, this one's really important. So one additional thing, Council President Walsh was talking about, you know, tracking the progress. It would be great if there's some, and I think I have made this a similar comment before, it'd be great to know if the minor challenges we're experiencing is the same. So if it's, you know, at some point, it becomes on a different track, and then it's no longer experiencing challenges, it just got delayed, and now it's back onto a new track. So it'd be great to have some sort of indication about if this is in the same sort of place that it was last time we checked in, or if this is experiencing new minor challenges and is now on a new track. I realize that that's challenging, but at the same time, it would help with some of these projects that continue to experience various forms of challenges over time.
Hey, Councilmember Ray, we'd appreciate a moment just to give an update on this. This project remains a very high priority for us, but there have been continuing challenges. Jeff Watling is on the call, and if I could ask him to just give a brief update as to where we stand. But I really want to reinforce to the city council that we hear you, that we've heard you a year ago plus, you know, almost 18 months ago, the council made it very clear, get this darn project done, that you're tired of waiting, get it done. And your staff has heard you loud and clear. But unfortunately, as Director Watling will share, we continue to have some challenges. So with that, Director Wally?
You bet. Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowitz. Councilmember Hunt, thank you for the question. Yes, absolutely, this is a priority project for us. Increasing livability and access to that park is a huge priority. As I responded to you in the email, and we'll certainly make sure with any of the listening audience, the minor challenges that we received last summer with, when we were given the news that a portion of the long-used 30-year-old, 40-plus-year-old playfield in the park had a designated wetland within that playfield, that caused a fundamental change to this project. We then immediately went into some work with our consultant team, doing some environmental review, did some work with the community on community engagement, on how we want to respond to that new news. The consensus that we received and brought back to you as council, and now how we're proceeding with the project is proceeding with doing drainage improvements on that field, so the community gets the performance of that playfield if wants. That means fully mitigating that wetland. That means an entirely different, robust permitting process that we've already begun work on. As the project description shares with you, we're entering the next phase of public engagement this spring. We plan on doing consensus building with the community, having a preferred concept, preferred design completed by the end of August this year. All the while, we've already begun work with not only community planning and development on the permitting process, but we've also begun engaging with the Army Corps of Engineers and State Department of Ecology, who will be involved in that permitting process. This will all lead us to, again, having a preferred concept done this year, permitting process through the fall and winter, and being able to hit the construction cycle next year. Remains a high, high priority for us. We're just solving a more complex set of, set of problems to get that work done.
All right, thanks, Director Watling, appreciate the update. Anything else on capital projects? I think we can move on. City Administrator, did you want to do the dashboard here as part of performance measures? Or do you want to do performance measures and economic development, and then come back and do dashboard? How do you want to do that?
Well, I don't know if there's any questions on economic development, we can take those, and then we can conclude with performance measures.
That's what I was thinking, too. Any questions on economic development? Council President Walsh?
No questions. I just wanted to say I really love the community survey and the presentation of the information on what businesses were wanted, and I hope that goes out wide. I just wanted to highlight, that's so cool.
All right, thank you. Well, on that, let's move into performance measures report, and shall we turn it over to you, City Administrator Bob Kowitz?
And I'll turn it over to Dale Markey-Crimp, who will give you an update on where we're at with the performance measures and how we're presenting it to you and to the community. Dale?
Great, thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowitz. Good evening, good looking evening, city councilmembers, it's great to see you this evening, even if remotely. I'm Markey Crimp, I'm a management analyst here at the city, and tonight I'll be walking you through the test dashboard for our citywide performance measures. Unlike previous reports, this dashboard will be interactive, and so it will allow visitors to the site to drill into each of the strategic goal areas. Members of the public can see what performance and progress looks like across years aligned to our strategic goal areas. And hopefully, our internal staff will also use this dashboard to see the alignment between their department work and the vision we have for our city now and in the future. While there's, I'm sure more we can measure, as you all know, my hope is that all city employees will seek connection between their work and the overall vision that we have here at the City of Issaquah. And while we know there are always areas for improvement, I think we should be pretty proud of the work that we are doing. However, this dashboard will allow us to see that when we fall short of our goals, we can really understand the areas for improvement, and we want to be as transparent as we can with the public about where we are now and what we intend to do to get better in the future, given the resources we have. So without me rambling, I'm going to share my screen here, and you can take a look at the dashboard. This URL was shared with you in your packet. It's not a live, no one can find this without that URL, and it's not currently live or searchable on our city website yet. But let me go ahead and share this with you. There we go. Okay. I believe you can now see the screen.
We can see it.
What you can see here is the master dashboard, which contains measures, dig it for all 54 of our citywide measures. What lives right now nested within our strategic plan section of the website, you can see right here, the citywide strategic plan, the dashboard to be nested inside here. As you scroll down, there's some copy and some context on the dashboard, it's got the, and all those links that are relevant to the dashboard itself. As you can see on the left wing side of the screen here, there are a number of what I'm calling mini dashboards, for lack of a better term, we'll come, we'll come back to that in a moment. But I want to just first dive into this dashboard from below. So you can see, this is the main, we're already paid the dashboard. Each of, there's some instructions, a little more context, but there's also some instructions down here on how to use the dashboard. Most simply, what you want, what you can do is to look at goals, look at the, excuse me, the measures, and then each goal area is to click on the wheel, the element in the wheel. So you can even see, it's giving you a little tool tip here, telling you to click here to follow the link. We'll use environmental stewardship as an example, and then I'll bring us back to the main screen. But so if I go ahead and I click here, it's going to bring me to the environmental stewardship landing page. You can see at here, we've got a triangle at the very top, with some additional directions that look very similar to the directions on the landing page, about how to navigate within the dashboard. We're using home, go all the way back. Again, we're back here at the home, and additionally, if I click back, it would bring me there as well, since it was the last page I visited. I'm going to just show us two measures tonight and use that as an example. And we'll use percentage of materials diverted from landfill, which is one of the measures of our environmental stewardship goal area. When you click on this, you'll see a couple things zoom into your vision pretty quickly, one being a TARP, and this is the year-over-year percentage of materials diverted from landfill. And you can see in the legend down here in the chart, by the different types of unit that materials are collected from. Quite a prescient example, not, was the one I had planned not sharing even before tonight's conversation. Every single page is going to have some sort of visualization, and it might also have a table like you see here below. If you're thinking, goodness, this is way too small, the wonderful thing about this dashboard is that every feature can be made bigger for focus mode. You can go ahead and, they'll make it nice and big. You can even see the entire dashboard in full screen mode, which I'm not going to use this evening, but please flip around. And I can use that focus as well on the TARP itself. So if it feels a little small, it's always, we're always able to make it bigger. You'll also notice, as you click through here, I hope you noticed, every single measure will have a definition, a target, if we have one, and we'll name its data source. Additionally, for measures that have now notable trends by the year 2021, or have had, I think, notable outlier data, you'll see in some of them, our data in 2020 is very different than previous years for not a surprising reason. It'll be some sort of 2021 year end update. Additionally, a wonderful thing about the sort of reporting tool is that we have the option to slice the data by different years. On many of the pages, you'll see a reporting year slicer, which allows you to use this drop-down menu and pick a year in here that you want to look at more closely. But it'll just show the data for that one year, and you see it's, elements are connected. Many you see, it goes for that year here, and you also see that you did it for that year down here in the first. A fun thing, well, I think it's fun, a fun thing is if you want to look at a couple of years, but not all of them, by holding your control button, you're able to look at a couple of years side by side. And you'll see down here, it'll tell you you've got multiple selections. It's easy enough to clear that, and you'll have them all together again. Now, I want to just bring us back briefly to the, see one other example in here, and that is where, a place where we've got more than one measure on the same page. So in some instances, the measure gets its own page all on its own. And then I made the decision in a couple of places to pair measures up, measures that seem inherently connected, something like citywide canopy, and also trees planted per year. A cool thing about this interactive is that it allows you to really highlight and just look and see, okay, so I just want to think about 2021, interesting. Something to note in here is that we, it's like we get an update on that every three to five years, and so the signal on below is going to stay stagnant for a little bit, but it'll be interesting to see when this is done, this is sort of measured again in a year or two, see if that tree count has increased following that big thing that happened in 2020. So, you know, I can click around all evenings. I do want to just report to the main page really quickly and highlight one other element here. We've made a decision to create some mini dashboards here along the, in this menu along this left. Sort of the same dashboards that live within the master dashboard. They're just broken out into their own dashboards, in case we've got someone that's really passionate about one of these topics, and doesn't want us to really throw all of this together. And they come to this landing page and they say, hey, I know I really care about mobility. I'm just going to go to this mobility element in the dashboard. And that's going to bring you the exact same of data and set of measures to explore. So even though these pages themselves are currently, the dashboards themselves are the only content on these menu breakout pages, you could imagine that this page is further built out with content and links to other related dashboards. So in the case of environmental stewardship, for example, there might be some copy above this environmental stewardship dashboard with link to the upcoming master dashboard, the upcoming community climate action talent dashboard, the upcoming Green As a Bar dashboard, things like that. For right now, we'll just live for the way they are currently with the dashboard itself. I'll pause there for questions, comments, ideas, input. But yeah, thank you.
All right, questions? Councilmember DeMichele?
I'll just be really brief, but I played around with this all yesterday, and it's wonderful, and thank you so much for all the work on it, and I love the way it's tied to the strategic plan. Just a couple of really small things, the gray there for the directions, it was very hard for me to read, and so I'm thinking that people with visual impairments might have difficulty with that gray. White against the gray, it sort of all fades together, and so, just a thought. And then I did notice a couple of places where dates had been transposed, and so I presume you're going to do a thorough proofreading before it goes public, right? But overall, you know, A+, even with those minor things. Thank you.
Council President Walsh?
Thank you, that's really helpful feedback.
It was very helpful, I appreciate that, because I saw that, too. First, I just wanted to say I'm really excited to see the progress toward more of the performance measures being complete, and I really loved seeing the information on the pilots and the progress on that, so I didn't want that to get lost in seeing this new, really cool performance dashboard. But then, for the administration, I'm going to want more information on a few things that this dashboard lovely showed decreases or increases on. So on dashboard slide 15, it showed that the permit review time in 2021 is much higher than our not-to-exceed target, so I'd like to get an email or understand what we're doing to remedy that. And then similarly, on slide 44, it shows a year-over-year decrease in our stormwater lines cleaned and the total catch basins inspected. So I'd like to understand why, whether that was a staffing issue, and what we're doing to fix that. And I would also like to thank Dale for making that very visual in being able to understand what those changes are, so that it's easy to highlight, hey, this is a problem, let's make sure we address it. Thanks.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. This is great to see, and I think it'll be very valuable to the community members. We actually recently had a person call in and give a public comment about saying they had poked rounds on the website and hadn't seen very much data, and I think we're interested in having that data be more easily accessible. So I think this will be really appreciated by the community, and clearly, a lot of work has gone into it, and it will be very valuable to council as well. On the comments that Councilmember De Michelle made about that gray, I think broadly, it would be valuable to run an accessibility checker on this. I know there's also some, with screen readers, there's some ways that you can make sure it's compatible also with a screen reader, as far as that like click here to make sure that it's getting people to the information that they need using different modes. So that would be my one suggestion, is to run an accessibility checker on it or two, but other than that, I think it's great and really taking us in a good direction and very valuable.
Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you, totally agree. This is super cool to be able to nerd out on. I didn't know you could actually click on the things. I was spending minutes clicking the arrows to get to slide 48. But I'm just curious, out of curiosity, I can't imagine the amount of work that went into developing the system, but now, you know, once it's developed and post-live, I'm curious from a staffing perspective, what it takes to actually update it, and you know, what that's like, is it really, is the hard part really over? Is updating it from the backend a lot easier?
Yeah, that's the good news. The hard part is over. It's been built, the way that we've got the data collection set up, there are data stewards in every department who are responsible for sharing that data by a deadline every year. I think you can see in the report, for many people, less than the end of February, even there are a few pieces of data that we're not going to get until the beginning of June, but we've got a data steward in every department who knows where that data needs to go into SharePoint, and that SharePoint is linked directly to this tool. So the moment that goes in there, I can go in and I can click refresh, and it will pull that data into the visualization. Now, it could be even more automated. I think we want to make sure the data is clean before it gets pushed to the public, and so we're going to be probably, we're going to be thoughtful about how often we update, and make sure that we do an audit of the data before it gets pushed to the dashboard, pushed to the public website. But it, you know, the interviews, I did about 20 interviews with similar, not actually similar-sized cities, but cities that are also using this technology, and for them, even if they're managing 15, 20 dashboards, it takes them five minutes every day to update them all. So this is, my real focus has been sustainability of the service itself. I want this to be something that lasts in perpetuity and hopefully improves, and so I've really thought about what can be, what's the little maintenance? Let's really focus on the data being great, and the system itself requires little maintenance.
Any final questions or comments? Dale, thank you, that was amazing, and I'm just surprised that Councilmember Marx, who's our local resident data head, wasn't like totally all over that. But anyway, thank you for that. City Administrator, thanks for the presentation, and with that, we will move on to our final order business, which is good of the order. Oh, Deputy Council President?
Sorry, did we take public comment on that last item? I know it's.
We did not. City Clerk, is there anybody on the virtual meeting?
Councilmember Ray, there is no one attending virtually.
Julian, would you like to make a comment? Come on up.
Hi, good evening. I also wanted to mention that a useful thing that would be built into this tool, I think, would be something related to archiving, especially if someday it became leprous. It'd be useful to have archives readily available, especially in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. All right, good of the order. Anybody have good of the order? Councilmember De Michelle?
So I know it's late, so I'll be very, very brief, but I attended, on Saturday, I attended the State of Mind Conference that was put together by the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board and run by the advisory board, and they just did a fabulous and really professional job, and they had wonderful speakers. So I just wanted to thank Kathy Jones, who's been the advisor for that group for years and years, and she just does such a great job with the kids and gives them so much leadership, guidance, and development, and you can see the kids just developing the ability to organize and present, and it was great. And what I loved, too, there was a seventh grader who was, did one introduction, followed by a junior in high school. It was like the short and the tall of the Issaquah Youth Advisory Board, but anyway, great job, and it was a great fun to attend it.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Looking, looking, all right. If there's no other business, we are adjourned at whatever time it is, at 10:28.